Good evening and welcome. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board on September 8th, 2022. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place at this meeting has been given by prominently posting the amended resolution of regularly scheduled meetings of the Planning Board of Princeton for February 2022 through January 2023. A copy was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on January 7th, 2022. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution in January 14, 2020 also has been posted to the municipal website, princetonnj.gov/calendar. Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the ongoing state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on April 8th, 2020, and again on January 6th, 2021. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. During hearings on applications for development, members of the public will have an opportunity to comment and ask questions. Questions may be each applicant's witness has testified. Public comment is heard by the board after an applicant's representatives have finished their presentations and have been questioned by Planning Board members and staff. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand by clicking on the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen, or if participating by phone, by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public express your views in three minutes or less. We have a countdown clock to help speakers keep track of time. Please note that speakers who exceed three minutes will be interrupted. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be muted. Carrie, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Capizoli? I'm here. Mr. Chow?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Sacks?
Here.
Mr. Texardi?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Bodikheimer? I know I saw you.
I see Mr. Bodikheimer, but he was muted before.
Yeah, he's gone, but I know I saw him. I'm sure he'll join us. And Mrs. Wilson? Where's Nat?
She's frozen.
Oh, she's frozen.
Hey, here. I'm sure he'll rejoin, and he probably just clicked the wrong saying here. Okay, I hope it was a good one for all. We have, here's Mr. Bogheimer back again, I see.
Okay, good.
Announcements. Board members, staff announcements?
I don't have the agenda right in front of me. Is this also the time for subcommittee reports, or?
No, that comes right, that comes next. Thanks, yeah. Well, I wanted to give folks a heads up about the question of meetings via Zoom versus in person, and just let you know, and let the public know that the thinking is that we will remain meeting via Zoom exclusively, at least through the end of this calendar year, at which point we will revisit the question and discuss it and decide whether to go back to in-person or to a hybrid type of arrangement. And the only other announcement I had is really just a a an add-a-boy, add-a-girl, I guess, for municipal, for council, and I guess for the university as well, and for staff, and that is the Making Witherspoon Initiative. I don't know whether folks have walked downtown, but there are window posters and sandwich board signs that explain the work that's happening on Witherspoon Street, and give folks a sense of what to expect, and why it's good, and when it'll be finished, and it's really nice. So I just wanted to point that out. Draw your attention to it for members of the Planning Board who happen to be walking downtown. Take a look, it's it's a nice thing to see. So, thanks to all who had anything to do with that. And now, I guess if there are no other announcements. Justin?
Yes, I was going to give our usual announcement about the master plan, if you would like.
Sure.
Great. So, good evening, Planning Board members and members of the public. The Master Plan Steering Committee met on the 24th of August. That video is on YouTube if you're interested in watching that. We're really starting to make the transition from the background kind of data gathering and analysis phase of our existing documents to our outreach period. So, coming up, me and other staff members will be out tabling to direct people to our Engagement Hub website, which you could go to at engage.pristinemasterplan.org. Right now, it's still relatively bare bones, but there's a notification feature on there that's going to tell you every time we update the calendar, when we might have a new survey and other things like that. We'll also put those YouTube videos and everything else up there. That'll be the main spot to go to if you're interested in seeing where we are in the process. So I'll be tabling at the Lotteria in Heinz Plaza this weekend with a QR code directing people to that. There's the YMCA event coming up next weekend, and another at St. Paul's Church. Mr. Quinn so kindly invited me to the Jugtown Block Party, but unfortunately, I won't be here that weekend or that day. But please, if there are any events that you think it'd be good to spread the word about the master plan, please let me know. I made that same request to the Steering Committee members, and, you know, we obviously will have some of the larger events in town covered, but something like that block party, or even, we've heard, like a mahjong game is the place to go to get certain people, and, you know, anything like that that you think could be beneficial, I'd love to be out there telling people where to go. Because next that's coming up, we have a community visioning survey that'll come out in mid-September, and an open house in early December, and we hope for that to be in-person. So those are a little further away. We don't have exact dates yet, but if you follow along at engage.pristinemasterplan.org, you'll know all about them, and I'll also be here at every meeting. The folks here will know about everything, but for general members of the public too, if you want to stay most up to date. And let's see what else I have. And then our next steering committee meeting is going to be September 28th. Those are on Zoom, and that's open to the public. That Zoom link will be on the municipal calendar soon.
Justin, can you say a few words about the outreach that you're doing to the municipal boards and commissions and committees?
Sure. Like I said, we're going from the kind of background gathering work, where I'm sending the consultant certain things, they're sending things back, we're asking questions, to really being able to produce some results from people, bring them to the boards, committees, and commissions for their expertise and refining them. So that's the, that's kind of the next thing that's going to go along with this. We have so many boards and commissions, and they have just such great expertise on particularly the elements that will be in the master plan, whether it's historic preservation, whether it's green building and sustainability, you know, et cetera. We have one or two or three groups that has a specific specialty in them, and, you know, I look forward to going to all those groups. And if you're a member of one of those boards, commissions, and committees, and, you know, want to introduce me and make some connections, I'd love that as well. I expect we'll see just about all of them over the next couple of months.
Good.
I have a question.
Sure, yep.
Zenon? So, I was just wondering when or if we will be able to see the results of some of the surveys and outreach activities along the way, so, or whether we're going to have to wait till the very end?
No, no, I could absolutely provide them in your packets before the meetings. Thus far, we've had the one economic survey that's almost all buttoned up. I didn't mention it today, but the last piece of that economic analysis is a survey going out to the Princeton University students. We already polled the seminary students, and we're just making sure we get Princeton University ones too. So, if you know any students at the university, please let them know to fill out that survey. They might not get a free Amazon gift card with it, like, like they're used to other surveys and things in their email, but it'll be worth their while. So, once that's done, then I'll certainly be bringing those things along to these meetings.
Great, and I understand that that survey for the students, Princeton University students, is going out, I guess, under the auspices of the university, but also there will be flyers and posters at key points along the way on campus, like at Frist or other places where students gather, the eating clubs, I don't know.
Yeah, we're still discussing with the university the best way to reach the students. It would be great if there's an article in the newspaper, too. So I'm sure I'll reach out to them, or I hope they reach out to me to discuss.
Good.
In the Princetonian, I mean.
Right. Okay. Any other questions for, for Justin? Okay, let's go on then to subcommittee reports and updates. Tim, I think you have one from the ad hoc committee, and Dave, oh, Scott, David, you jumped in with your hand up, so you go first.
Thanks. Yeah, I just wanted to report, we had a good meeting of the Site Plans Subcommittee this past Tuesday, and we were reviewing an application for some minor revisions to 140 Nassau Street. It's the prior location of Kadopa. And the plan is to actually have two establishments go in there, a restaurant that's a ramen place, and a small, I guess it's a doughnut, it's called Mochanut. So they're owned by the same owners, but they are two separate entities, and we had a little bit of discussion about how the two spaces relate to each other. But in general, the committee was quite unanimous that it qualified as a minor site plan, and that we wanted to recommend approval to the chair, which is the process that's required under our ordinance for classification of site plans.
And that was with the set of conditions which were laid out in the submission to the chair.
Right.
And my understanding is that this application also got a look from HPC?
That's correct. It's in the Nassau Historic District, so it was not purely advisory, it was actually an official review. Julie can speak to that.
Yes, we were completely comfortable with the project. Well, there was one person who was a little hesitant on changing the storefront, but the majority voted in favor.
All right, good, thank you. Any questions for David or Julie about that? 140 Nassau? Great. Mr. Quinn?
We, nothing to report other than we will be scheduling a meeting to determine how we're going to write and make our formal recommendations, so that meeting will be.
And by we, you mean the ad hoc?
Members of the ad hoc committee.
Design review, yeah.
Correct. I thought you queued me before.
I said your name, but I don't think that I, maybe I did. I don't think I said what you were going to talk about.
So, yes, the ad hoc committee will be meeting, and we hope to have some recommendations for the board to review by October, by our first meeting in October. I don't have my notes for the date on that, but I think it's the 8th, right? Am I remembering that correctly?
October 6th.
6th, close, right? That's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think that's the, those are the only subcommittee reports that we have. So let's move on to minutes. We have three sets of minutes from October 14th, the regular meeting, and then two special meetings. So, let's start with the October 14, 2021, regular meeting. Are there any questions or suggested edits anybody has, and if not, would someone like to move those minutes?
I'll move them.
I'll second.
Moved by Mr. Cohen, seconded by Mr. McGowan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Thanks. October 21st, we had a special meeting for which we have minutes to consider tonight. Any comments, questions, edits?
Sorry to interrupt, but that was a regular meeting.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Well, so we had a regular meeting two weeks in a row?
The 14th.
Maybe because it doesn't matter, as long as you're saying it was regular, that's fine. It's identified as a special meeting on the agenda, but but if it's regular, then I stand corrected.
No, it must be me. I'm sorry.
Mr. Bodikheimer?
I just wanted to point out that I abstained on the last one because I wasn't present for that, or any of the 2021, sorry, 2021 meetings.
Yes.
I'll be abstaining on all of them.
I don't know if extensions really fall into that category. If you were not present, you would not be called upon for a vote. That's how I was trained, so I hope I'm right.
Belts and suspenders.
Exactly, yeah. Okay, so the October 21st meeting minutes, would someone like to move those? I'm sorry, yeah, October 21st, and then we'll do the 26th afterwards.
Right, I'd like to move them.
Thanks. Moved by Ms. Capizoli, seconded by?
I'll second.
Mr. O'Donnell, Mr. O'Donnell. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, and then October 26th. The minutes of October 26th, 2021. Edits, suggestions, and if not, would someone like to move those, please?
I'll move them.
Thanks. Moved by Mr. Cohen, seconded by?
I'll second.
Thanks, Mr. McGowan, seconded by Alvin McGowan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstaining? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have two resolutions slash findings of fact. The first is for an application from the trustees of Princeton University. This was a minor site plan for the Butler Interim Dining Facility on Elm Drive, Block 45.01, Lot 101. File number P 2222, 198 PM. Did not get any comments on the, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Bodikheimer, your hand is still up. Did you mean to, okay.
I just meant that I believe that I need to recuse myself for this conversation.
Ah, right, thank you. Would someone like to move this resolution?
Julie, I'll move it.
Moved by Ms. Capizoli, seconded by Mr. Cohen. Can we have a roll call? Please, Carrie?
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen, I'm sorry, Mr. Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Texardi?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you.
The next resolution is for West Windsor Real Estate. This was a preliminary and finer ma, final major site plan and final subdivision. 176, 182, and 188, Byrd Lane, Block 6802, Lots 44, 45, and 46. This was file number P 2121, 027P/SPF. And we did have, I think these were copied to everyone, some comments and a question from Mr. Cohen. And maybe either Mr. Muller, Mr. Cohen, or Mr. Lesko can describe where how all of that was finalized. I think I know, but I'd rather somebody else jump in and do that.
I can certainly take a crack at that.
Thanks, Jerry.
David makes two points. One of which is really straightforward, it's on page nine, where under surface water drainage, it reads a stormwater management design was revised by Justice Scopian, it should say, reviewed by Justice Scopian. And then the second was, it appeared at two different points, that there were three walkways to the houses and one walkway. And Jim Purcell tells me there's one walkway, and maybe the way, maybe what was confusing is on paragraph, in paragraph four, on page two, second sentence, it says a sidewalk along Byrd Lane is to be reconstructed with a walkway connecting to each home. And maybe it should say connecting to the houses or the homes, and it would be, maybe that would make it clearer that it's just one walkway. David, you want to jump in and see what you think, and tell us what you think?
Yeah, I, I mean, just to summarize, and Ms. Wilson had commented on this in the email chain, the number of walkways was actually reduced to reduce the impervious coverage as much as possible on the site. So, yeah, I think the language should read that there will be a single walkway connecting the three houses to the new sidewalk.
Good.
And I don't think we need more than that. I'm not sure we've even seen a revised plan showing that yet, and it's probably going to go to the Landscapes Subcommittee. So we can't be more specific than that at this time.
Okay, sounds good.
Right, so with that, with those corrections, would someone like to move this resolution?
I'll move it.
Thanks, David. Moved by David Cohen, seconded by?
I'll second.
Thanks, Mr. Quinn, seconded by Tim Quinn.
I don't have Tim down as being. Were you, I should have, I don't know why I missed that.
I participated in.
Yes, you did. I'm sorry.
I participated in both meetings.
Good, okay.
Carrie, I believe I was not at the second meeting for that.
Correct, correct, and Mr. Bodikheimer. Okay, roll call?
Yes, please.
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Miss, Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Texardi?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have a continuation of a hearing with the property owner J. J. Moan. This is preliminary and final major subdivision and site plan at 54 and 94 Van Dyke Road, Block 4501, Lots 1 and 2. This is file number P 1919-690SPF/P. And this is continued from June 2nd. So I recall that we were about to hear from an objectors' expert witness. The attorney representing the applicant is Mr. Kennedy, Ryan Kennedy, is that correct?
That's right.
So are we just pick up right, oh, let me ask a question. I recall at the end of the meeting, there was conversation about potentially getting together the applicant and objectors' experts, and talking through some of the questions, and the board had no objection to that course of action. Can someone report whether that happened? And then we can just sort of pick up where we left off. Go right ahead, Mr. Kennedy.
Certainly. Regrettably, it didn't. On our side, we were kind of on the edge of our seats. If you also recall, at the June meeting, we were all kind of waiting for the DEP rules that were just around the corner and coming, but ultimately didn't come. So we, we believe, actually, we'll have some, after we hear from the objectors expert, some very positive things to say about the ability to modify our system to, if not meet that, get very close. I'm excited to, you know, when we talk about that later, but unfortunately, we weren't able to get together.
Okay. Mr. Potter, do you want to reintroduce your, your expert witness, or should we just go straight to Mr. Thone and ask for his qualifications? Maybe we already did that. I don't recall.
I think we, I don't think we got through his qualifications. He has a very extensive CV. But John, are you on?
I think, I think he got put back in the attendees and has to be brought back over.
I am in the process of bringing him over right now.
Thanks, Carrie.
Thank you, Carrie.
Before we.
Mr. Texardi, sorry.
I, I remember that in, I wasn't at the last meeting, and I didn't finish watching the video, so I won't be able to sit down on this hearing.
Okay.
But I will join.
Thank you. So, so Zenon Texardi and Phil Chow are both then you, then okay, so will you just then go over into the attendees?
Yeah, I can do that.
I think that's the thing to do. Carrie?
Yes, I will do that.
Have you succeeded in bringing Mr. Thone over?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so go ahead and, and take Mr. Chow and Mr. Texardi to the attendees room.
I think everything's in order now, just.
Okay, great. And just so folks know, there are 21, well, now 23 folks, members of the public who are tuning in. Perhaps not all for this application, but just so folks know. Okay. Mr. Potter?
I think Mr. Thone has to be sworn in.
Oh, I thought it was sworn in the last meeting, no? Okay, if you could raise your right hand, Mr. Thone, do you swear or affirm testimony about the truth?
I do.
So I swear I affirm. Please state your full name and spell your last name.
John, I think.
John Thone, T-H-O-N-E-T.
Thank you.
Jerry, we had a discussion this afternoon, you and I, about marking exhibits. You want to, shall I mark the exhibits before Mr. Thone testifies, or as we go along?
I think the first thing to do is qualify Mr. Thone. Is that correct, Mr. Muller?
Yeah. That's actually the exhibit one, which is his qualification, CV. Mr. Thone? I don't see you up here.
I seem to be here.
Okay, you must be here. I can hear your voice.
Okay. We can see you, John.
I don't see your face. Oh, there he is. I see, I see, you're down in the corner there, next to Mr. Kennedy. I don't want to get too close to him. Mr. Thone, do you, do you want to describe your educational background and your professional background?
Yes, I have a Bachelor of Science and a Master of Science in a program called Forest Engineering from the State University of New York, College of Environmental Science and Forestry, located on the campus of Syracuse University. And this is a unique program where I got to take my engineering courses from Syracuse University, and environmental science and forestry classes from the State University of New York, College of Environmental Science. College of Environmental Science and Forestry, and they have a, a mutual agreement that allows that to, to happen. As a result, I, I graduated. I immediately went to work for the St. Lawrence decent Ontario shoreline group for a summer job before going into my master's program. And where I was a teaching assistant and in one semester was teaching hydrology and hydraulics and then the other structural analysis and design. From there, I went to work. Yes. I went to work for the power authority of the state of New York as one of their first three environmental engineers. Stayed there about a year and left and went to a large engineering company, international engineering company called Tibbetts Abbott McCarthy Stratton, based in New York City. Where for that firm, I actually prepared many of the flood insurance studies for the Federal Emergency Management Agency for the municipalities in New Jersey and also the flood hazard area and flood floodway maps for the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. I stayed there about five years and was asked to come to be an associate in a small land use planning firm called Dresner Associates located in Summit, New Jersey. I worked there for about a year as the, as the only engineer and decided after a year, I could do this by myself. So at twenty-nine years old, I started Thonay Associates. And this year, we celebrated our forty-second year of providing environmental planning and engineering design services in the state of New Jersey. I'm a licensed professional engineer and a, and a licensed practicing land use planner in the state of New Jersey. I'm also licensed as an engineer in Massachusetts, in Pennsylvania, and in Michigan, where I've provided services over the years. And I've just retired my engineering license in West Virginia. I'm now on retired status.
Thank you, Mr. Thonay. We, we accept your qualifications.
Thank you.
All right. And you have a full statement of your qualifications and listing of projects in exhibit one, is that correct?
That's correct.
Let me ask you. Would you describe briefly your relationship to this application?
Uh, yes. I received a call.
History of your activities.
Yes, I received a call in August of two thousand and nineteen, I believe it was, from some neighbors who live on Meadowbrook Drive adjacent to this site, and they had some concerns. They wanted me to review those concerns and advise them whether or not they needed to be concerned. And so I did. As part of my review, I made a point of meeting with the, I think John West was his name. He was the land use planner for the town and Joe Scoopian, the stormwater management consultant. Because I had a lot of thoughts having reviewed the stormwater management, I wanted to discuss it with them, and they were very good and met with me, and we, we discussed them.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Thonay, but just for the record, Jack West was the municipal engineer.
Okay.
Uh, not the director of planning, so I just want to make sure that the record reflects that.
Uh, thank you, thank you. And we had a very good conversation, and I thought it was a good exchange. And I was pleased that the next time I saw revisions to the plans, they incorporated many of the, the very items that we had talked about. And so then everything went quiet for a little while. And in October of two thousand and twenty-one, I asked my client if I could call the applicant's engineer and see if we could get a discussion going. So the, as usual, lawyers talked to each other and said, yeah, they, they thought that would be okay. And, and so I did. And we had a, also a very good discussion. And then things went quiet again for a while. But we were very pleased to see that in November of, of two thousand and twenty-one, there were revised plans that reflected many of the things that we had discussed, and we were very pleased to, to see that. So I've reviewed those plans. And I submitted a report to Mr. Potter. I think it's.
If I may. If I may interrupt again, and Bill, you referred to an exhibit earlier. Give me some identification markers for the exhibit. Interestingly, I had actually marked some exhibits at the prior hearing, and Mr. Thonay was actually sworn in, so he's been sworn in twice. So, Mr. Thonay, it's really important that you tell the truth, because you were there two times.
I'm gonna work twice as hard to do that.
Okay, so Bill, what, 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 what report were you referring to? And you, you want to have it marked?
Uh, yeah. Exhibit one, professional history of Thonay Associates.
Okay.
Here's a nice photograph of John.
Yeah.
And it's a list of his the educational activities, his professional licenses, and many, many activities, many projects and so forth. So he journey is qualified as an environmental planning and engineering design expert. Uh, that's exhibit one.
Is that just one page, Bill?
Uh, no, it's not. It's
It's probably about a dozen pages.
Okay, Bill, if you could send me the entire exhibit.
I, I will do so.
I thank you. And also.
Yes, send me everything that you present this evening, please.
Right. John, did you prepare a report of your meeting on December seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen with John West and Joe Scoopian?
Uh, yes, I, we met in December of two thousand and nineteen, and I believe I wrote the report in January of two thousand and twenty and sent that to him just so that, to recap what we had been talking about and what my recommendations were.
And did that contain a list of, I think it's ten recommendations?
Yes, I believe there were ten.
And Jerry, this is also, I would have Marcus exhibit two.
Yeah, why don't we mark it? We actually marked it previously. When you would mark this exhibit one, that's going to be exhibit oh-one. This, which is that January two letter, and I guess it's twenty-four pages, that'd be oh-two.
Miss, Mr. Potter, you're muted. You're speaking.
You're, you're still muted, Mr. Potter.
Hit your spacebar on your computer and you'll unmute.
There we go. Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are unmuted. Yes, sir.
Muted now? Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Oh, good. John, why don't you go through your ten recommendations?
The, I don't think there, those ten recommendations, Bill, I don't think are particularly important at this stage because the applicant followed most of them. And that was the first major set of changes that we made. But I think it's relevant to the record to show that we've had good communications, both with the applicant and with the town. And that it's resulted in major changes that frankly, we, we think are good. The, the, the next important exhibit would be my May third report to Bill Potter, which is the review of the revised plans that are before you tonight.
And we'll mark that as exhibit oh-three.
Exhibit oh-three.
That too is a lengthy report, but I have reduced it to a relatively short summary to present tonight. It's like a three-page summary that really hits the key points.
Before we get to that, exhibit oh-three is a eight-page report coupled with an appendix A and appendix B explaining your recommendations for, or your comments and, and analysis of the revised application.
Correct.
And Jerry, this is oh-three here, and I'll get that to you, a clean version, by the way.
Yeah, because the, the the May three letter I have is actually not eight pages, but twelve pages.
Hold on. You are correct.
Okay.
All right. John, would you turn your attention to the May third twenty, twenty-two?
Yes.
And describe your reactions to the revised site plan and major subdivision application by the applicant.
Uh, yes, I'll refer to my summary.
Which is, hold on. Yeah, that's the three-page summary.
Yes, that's a three-page summary that I believe succinctly makes our, presents our findings and recommendations.
And we'll mark that as exhibit oh-four.
Exhibit oh-four.
Yes, oh, as an objector.
I would also note that the May third comment letter was also provided to the applicant's engineer and, and the applicant. And that's, this is because we felt that the best way to, you know, communicate what we were thinking about was to tell them. And that they would therefore be, you know, best prepared to respond by having the information well ahead of time.
And Mr. Thonay, this, this three-page summary, which we've marked as oh-four, that's a summary, that's a summary of oh-three, the May letter?
Uh, the May letter, yes.
All right, thank you.
So this is the most recent summary of the most recent application, and these are all of our recommendations. May I just sort of go, start going through this, Bill?
Mr. Potter, you, you are muted. If you hold your spacebar down, you probably will unmute yourself at least for long enough to answer Mr. Thonay's question. We cannot hear you.
No, sir.
There you go.
Right now.
Yes.
We can hear you now. Yeah.
Good.
Okay, I'll make quick work of this. First, first recommendation has to do with a comment on one of the applicant's notes on sheet four entitled Major Site Plan. And it's a conservation easement note, which states "A conservation easement along the riparian corridor will be prepared to preserve the environmental features within the central portion of the site beyond the limits of disturbance shown on the plan." We're, we're good with that. But we do have a recommended change. And that is that instead of just referring to the riparian zone, that the conservation easement note should refer to the flood hazard area, the riparian zone, the freshwater wetlands, the freshwater wetland transition areas. All of those are all environmental features that are associated with that central corridor. And I actually believe that's what the applicant intended. But I think it would be good to make it clear, and, and what would also make it even more clear is if the actual location of that easement gets plotted on the plans to show exactly where it is and all the areas that it encompasses. It doesn't change anything on the plans, you know, where they're developing, they're developing, because these are, the conservation note is to preserve these areas really up to the disturb, the areas proposed for disturbance. But I just think that would make it clear, and it would also put it on a map that we could, everyone could reference. The, the other part of the conservation note that I think we should change is that in addition to preserving these environmentally important areas along the central portion of the site, which is where Harry's, the Harry's Brook Tributary is, we, we would like to see a conservation easement that is across the southern portion of the project site. For example, if you were to look at the lot two-point-oh-three, which is the lot with the detention basin on it, you'll see that according to those plans, there's a detention basin there. There were a lot of trees taken out there. But then behind the basin, the trees are all left. We'd like to put that in a conservation easement so that we can be sure that in the future, those trees will still be left. Similarly, on lot two-point-oh-two, which is the lot that the applicant happens to live in, we would like to maintain a good buffer there along the southern boundary, but only, only as far as where the disturbed areas are shown on the plan. So wherever the applicant is proposing on his plans today that he's going to be disturbing to accommodate this project, we would want the eas, the conservation easement to go up to that point. And on lot one, similarly, along the southern boundary of the site, which borders the residence on Meadowbrook, there's a nice wooded area. And there's also a, a drainage swale. And if we could establish a conservation easement about fifty feet north of that drainage swale for the length of lot one, and that's sort of, it's about up to where the current driveway is and key, and conserve that area as woodlands. That would also be something that the, the neighbors would like to see. And there's an added benefit to it in that there is a, there are wetlands within that same area that thereby get preserved. There are and the, and the woodlands will provide a stormwater buffer to the drainage swale that's there. So the, the water that drains from lot one toward that will be cleaner than if those trees were ever taken down. And those are the, the reasons. And again, it doesn't change anything that's on the applicant's plans now, but it would make my client much happier to know that that buffer along the southern boundary would be maintained in perpetuity.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Thonay. I see Mr. Cohen has a question.
Yeah, I just wonder if somebody has a drawing that we could look at while the
Thanks.
suggestions are being made, because
Wholeheartedly agree.
A thousand words.
Yes.
I don't have a drawing, because the drawings that I've gotten are from, you know, digital copies that I downloaded from the website of the town. And I normally, you know, color these things up and present them in person in a, in a hearing. But the most important thing that you need to know is that we're talking about all the environmentally sensitive areas along the central corridor where Harry's Tributary are, just expanding that to include all of those areas, but no but not change the areas that are being proposed to be developed. And also to provide a good buffer along the southern boundary of the site for the benefit of the neighbors. Just, just on the other side of the boundary line. And it's okay with us if the town's professionals and the applicant, you know, taking the summary that we are submitting.
Taking the summary that we are submitted and looking at that, work something out that looks reasonable. To the town and to the applicant, we would be happy with that.
So if I can ask a follow up question.
Yes.
It sounds like some of what you're describing relates to documented environmentally sensitive areas.
Yes.
Wetlands, riparian zone, and so forth, some of it is just a buffer. That your client would like to have, and it does not relate to environmentally sensitive or. At least not officially designated environmentally sensitive areas, and I'm, I just wanna be clear. You're, you are asking for conservation easements on both. Delineated sensitive areas and other areas in addition.
It's, that is correct, however, I would be. I I I really must. State that forested areas are environmentally sensitive areas, they are recognized as such. In the reports that your professionals have prepared. And preserving them are considered important, and that point was made very clear by your own professionals, so. Preserving woodlands are are very important, that's, that's, those are natural woodlands, let's, let's leave them. But you are correct, they are not wet, there there are wetlands within the woodlands on. Um, on lot one that would be preserved by this additional buffer. Uh, but other than that, we're just talking about more trees.
Mister Thonay, let me ask you this.
Talking about retaining more trees, not adding back more trees.
No, just retaining trees that are not, that are not being proposed to be cut down now.
Okay.
Application.
Just wanted to make that clear, sorry, Jerry, go ahead.
At the June second meeting, uh, the applicant made a presentation, I guess it was a PowerPoint presentation, I just have hard copy. The last page says, um, is titled forested and woodland wooded areas existing and proposed. And it shows on the left side existing, the right side proposed, uh, do you, do you have access to that? Well, maybe Justin, you, can you possibly put that up? Cuz maybe that that might be useful in terms of responding to to what David said about, do we have a map, and Brian, did you have something?
Uh, yeah, I I'd be happy to put that up, and I'll also submit that, um, since, you know, looking at this on Tuesday, we've, we've marked it up as well with. Some, um, you know, additional areas that we we, the applicant would be willing along the lines of what Mister Thonay is, uh. Describing to include as well, so I I'd be happy to put up that original map, I think it was slide ten from A one, I can put that on the screen if you'd like.
Yes.
Or I can proffer that, okay.
Thank you.
I I should make sure I can do that before I promise, uh, technical things that don't work, but give me one second here.
I love the Zoom meetings, but some of the, some of the sharing, the maps and stuff are difficult.
There.
Um, if we could. Mister Kennedy, if we could move that up a little bit so we can see the southern boundary. Uh, of the site. Oh, yes, we could, that's perfect, now, look at, everyone should look at lot two point oh, three on the far right hand side. All we're asking on lot two point three is that area that shows in green on that between there and the southern boundary. Be in a conservation zone. And similarly, on lot two point oh, two, that the green area shown between. The disturbed areas and the uh, southern boundary also be preserved, and we already have the corridor preserved. And then going to lot one, if you can see where the applicant's driveway is. And the, from there all the way down to the southern boundary, we're hoping that that area. Can also be preserved, it doesn't necessarily have to be preserved wrapping around the house as it shows. But it should be at least, you know, about fifty feet off that drainage ditch that runs down through that area. And uh, those are the areas that we're talking about that could be additional conservation areas.
And John, with this preservation of. Additional woodlands, uh, would it help to mitigate the? Uh, loss of trees. I think.
Oh, I I, I think it's, it's even more than that, um, you know, with climate change, we're. Uh, anticipating, uh, some relatively significant increases in the amounts of rainfall. And, uh, one of the best, uh, measures to mitigate. You know, runoff are are forests and and wooded areas, so maintaining as many trees as possible. Uh, and still accommodating the project is important going forward. To, uh, to helping us, uh, be more resilient in the face of climate change.
So can we hear from Mister Ryan, uh, from Mister Kennedy as to. How?
Sure. And if I could, uh, I, with apologies, we worked this out this afternoon, I I think it would be benefit if I put a, that map that we colored up a little bit. Uh, I guess this, I think this is only our second exhibit.
Yeah. Right.
So with, uh. Uh, so here, this is a blow up of, uh, where it's supposed to be of a ten. Looking at, uh, the previously proposed areas, we essentially kind of expanded them in a few areas. Uh, particularly cutting over in this bottom left area and creating some type of buffer. Uh, in addition to the areas that, um. Uh, are actually environmentally constrained, this bottom right corner, and. I ought to be careful not to testify here and invite our engineer previously sworn, uh, to to. Maybe not help, but to actually say these things, um, uh, so if Mister Kamalik, uh, could, uh. Be reminded that I believe he's sworn in from last time and perhaps take us through it, but this bottom right corner is a. Uh, a wetlands buffer area, um, there is at this straight area, nothing particularly, but we we. Would be willing to have a an additional buffer there, um, and I'm maybe let Jim explain the reason why we need a little bit more. Uh, I'll say wiggle room, uh, here, particularly if we're going to, uh, deal with more stormwater and expand the basin, which I think we'll talk about in one of the next bullet points, so Jim.
Yeah, so so I think in this lower right hand corner, um, we have a. Environmentally sensitive area, so that's why it's a little bit wider in that area, and as it transitions to the left. Within that wooded area, um, we do wanna make sure that. We have the ability to access this opposite side of the of the, um, the stormwater basin as well. So we need to be mindful of not, uh, overly restricting that area. Uh, so that's, that's one thing to keep in mind, the second thing is. You'll find when you look at the existing conditions plan and the tree survey is that a majority of the trees in this vicinity. Are closer to that southerly property line, sort of hugging the line. Um, so, you know, I think fifteen or maybe twenty feet at the most in that vicinity. Would still protect those trees of interest, um. And and provide an element of a buffer and conserve those trees, but. To expand that significantly and make it wider, you you know, you'll find that. The trees are hugging the property line as it is, and then as we get to the left near the outlet structure. The intent here was also to sort of transition and encompass a little bit more on a forty five degree angle, some of that green space. Um, we wanna be careful not to get, you know, too close to the outfall area so that. Uh, we'll be able to make that happen, and then entirely on the right side, as you continue to the north behind the existing house on lot. Two point zero two, um, the thought here was to follow the constrained area. Mostly of the riparian zone here, which sort of follows the limits of the existing wooded area, so as not to. Unnecessarily encumber the usable open grass backyard of lot. Two point zero two for this existing house to remain. Um, so that's why you can see as we traverse to the north, uh, it sort of hugs the boundary between the wooded area. And the, uh, and then the the open yard or lawn area to the right. And then, you know, we propose to sort of follow this riparian corridor, uh, to the left. We have a retaining wall up to the right for that front lot as you get close to Van Dyke Road. Um, and then as you come around on the o- opposite side, on the left hand side of this. Sketched conservation easement, what we utilize there was, uh, both the riparian zone as well as the limits of. The regulated wetland, um, as verified by the DEP. Um, and and whatever the furthest extent of the riparian zone and the additional wetland. In the middle here, you can see that that extends further than the riparian zone, um. And then as you traverse south towards the southerly property line, we included this larger tail to lot. Uh, one, lot one that remained, um, adjacent to the Meadowbrook development. Uh, to include that area as well, which will provide, you know, an additional wooded buffer in that vicinity, so. You know, that was our thought in terms of trying to. Increase, um, beyond the riparian zone, but also be sensitive to the areas we need to be sensitive to. Not to overly restrict. And then also within this, this wetland, which is under. The proposed conservation easement flag, which is in the left hand side there of of lot one, um. Abutting the adjacent residences that John talked about, um, there's a regulated wetland there that's. Intermediate resource value, it's, you know, restricted from, uh, disturbance by the DEP as well as its transition areas, so. That area is largely via the, you know, those restrictions, um. Uh, difficult, you know, to disturb, uh, unless a permit was needed for some specific purpose. And then you have this drainage ditch which conveys the water, you know, on it from the northwest down to the, down to the southeast. And that, you know, that that's something that is a drainage feature that may need maintenance in the future, et cetera, so that could be a consideration. Um, for whether we want permanent restriction of that area or not. Um, so as not to inhibit just ma- regular maintenance activities, so. Um, that area wasn't necessarily preferred by the applicant to include in the conservation easement, obviously, it'll be up to the board. Um, but but this was our approach to sort of conceptually, you know, take in the comments. Um, and come up with an expanded area that. We thought was reasonably suited.
And Jim, the the need for some additional flexibility, perhaps in the future. Uh, and visiting some of these other regulatory bodies that that have a say in these areas. Um, uh, perhaps relate to a couple things, right, is it the, the two existing houses that have existing. Uh, infrastructure and septic that may need to perhaps pursue a, a general permit or or an actual individual permit or something, something. Along those lines, uh, like any other homeowner would if they're, you know, stuck with a a a septic issue with their existing home. And then perhaps you could, uh, I I don't wanna jump too far to the end, but, uh, uh, in in potentially agreeing to. Uh, address additional quantities of stormwater up to future levels that are not yet required. Uh, would that require a little bit more space, uh, perhaps for that basin, uh, in that corner?
Yeah, just just a a little bit more, we can s- speak to that in a bit, but it does give that, you know, flexibility to make some slight modifications. Um, in that area, so I think overall, you know, we do have the outside agencies, the DEP, their transition areas. Um, and and our thought was, you know, let's, let's focus on this main riparian corridor. See what ancillary areas around the periphery, we can include with that, but just be mindful, we may not wanna. To overly restrict, especially the the two residences that are to remain.
Uh, I see Mister Cohen has had his hand up for some time, David, do you have a?
Yeah, I think I heard Jim answer this, but for the benefit of other. Uh, board members who may have lost it in the. In the fog, um, the drainage swale, the drainage ditch, which Mister Thonay. Was suggesting should be incorporated into. Uh, the conservation easement that falls under the flag. What you referred to as the flag of the note prop- property conservation easement, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you, so my question was whether that was considered a delineated wetland, though. Albeit low value wetland that has the fifty foot buffer that is required. So it's restricted in the way that Mister Thonay. Uh, was hoping it would be restricted, but not proposed for inclusion in the conservation easement. And you're asking to leave it out of the easement for future flexibility, such that the homeowner could deal with. DEP to, um, impinge on that or do maintenance on it, things like that, right?
That's correct, and and that that feature was. Part of the delineation with DEP, but it's it's ordinary value, which does not have a fifty foot buffer because it is a drainage ditch. And the feature to the left of it, that round polygon, that's an actual wetland feature that does have the fifty foot buffer, so. I'm just calling caution out for for future maintenance and activities that may be needed in the future. Um, just to let everybody know that. You know, we may not wanna overly restrict in that area if a decision was to put a conservation easement over there, just so we're aware of it.
Did, did you talk about, uh, your team talk about the possibility of including this area we're now talking about? In the conservation easement, but but with some carefully worded exceptions would permit intrusions into it for specified purposes.
We had, we hadn't previously considered that, but, um, uh, I I think that's something we would consider, I mean, it is largely encumbered already by. Outside regulatory agencies, and the thing that we're looking to avoid is a, a, a duplicate need to to bring the township into something if there's a. Technical need to go to DEP or something like that, so I I. I I believe that that's something that could be certainly worked out in, uh, in a form of easement, and at that point, it, you know, it becomes a, uh. I don't know, say a distinction without a difference, uh, but, um, uh, I I think something like that could be, uh, could be worked out.
Yeah, I was gonna ask something very similar, so maybe I don't even need to, but perhaps something. That's called, um, a stormwater easement, or, you know, that that by definition allows for. You know, green infrastructure practices to be maintained or enhanced, et cetera.
Well, there isn't, just to let, just to let you know, Ms. Wilson, there is a drainage easement which covers that. Um, but it, but it's not specific to, um, preservation or anything like that, but functionally, there is an existing easement. On the survey.
And does that, and does that translate into a homeowner's understanding that that may not be? Um, used in certain ways and, um, treated in certain ways with. Uh. You know, fertilizer and pesticide, for example, or other kinds of, um. You know, typical lawn maintenance practices that might be. Particularly, uh, contra indicated for a drainage area.
Well, I guess I would just say that there's, there there's likely language in that easement, but I doubt that it's that specific. Relative to things that you're talking about, however. You know, adjacent to the driveway there, we have a a slope where the the grade falls down, and that's an existing wooded area. Uh, we don't have open lawn that's immediately adjacent to it where you're mowing up against that feature. Where perhaps maybe that's a little bit more of a concern, it is pretty wooded right up to the driveway there, so that.
I guess I, I mean, I'm agreeing with with those who. Would would like to seek some kind of restriction there to make sure that those would, that it remains a wooded area. You know, and that those woods help to benefit the drainage and and all, and so I I. Agreeing with what I think others have said, and maybe Jerry, uh, you all can be awful about the language, you know, we. Get to that point, but it seemed like Mister Kennedy and his client were open to that, right?
Subject to, you know, agreement on the, on the language certainly, but, um, and and the types of restrictions, uh, and. Ability to to use that property, and I'll also, you know, look, these are, these would all be subject to the township's tree ordinance as well.
Can you, can you, um. Uh, I'm looking at that very narrow area down at the southern, um, lot line, the, yeah. Uh, I'm looking at that very narrow area down at the southern um lot line, the, yeah, how? What is that, like eight feet wide or something? I'm comparing it to All Saints Road, and it's like half this, half this wide as the road. I'm just wondering whether.
It's approximately fifteen, but as I was saying, on the order of fifteen or maybe twenty at the most, we feel would be reasonable and appropriate. And again, the trees that were located in that vicinity are really hugging that property line as opposed to being at a distance of twenty and thirty, thirty-five feet off the property line. So I, we think that that location would suit. And certainly we can tweak it and refine it as part of compliance, but you know, um, help it make suit the intent there from Mr. Thonay.
And if you were going to add stormwater features and and try to manage more stormwater on site. Aren't there ways that you could do that without enlarging the the basin there? I mean, could you have more, you know, smaller area distributed around the site with you know, permeable pavement or with uh or with other smaller basins here and there, a little sort of upstream from where that one is, or even stormwater planters along the sides of houses. I'm not, I don't mean to be prescriptive at all. I'm just asking about the approach of one, using one sort of centralized basin as opposed to distributing smaller ones on the site if you need to add capacity.
Yeah, I I he- I definitely hear what you're saying. Um, we did provide one slide where we showed the the larger B M P at the rear of the lot, plus the supplemental B M P rain garden in the new lot that would front on a Van Dyke Road. And then we also incorporated a lot of those vegetated swales on that front lot as it traverses around the house into the rain garden. As well as a swell, vegetated swell that parallels the driveway. And then we have vegetated swales that'll increase the time of concentration coming around the new structure on the lower lot. So our intent, that suits the intent of of what you're talking about in terms of achieving, you know, what our goals are for stormwater management in terms of quantity control and thinking of the future. We're still gonna maintain those features, but we do have to balance the areas that we do have suitable infiltration on the site. Um, and that's a consideration. And also, there's a, with all the things that I mentioned, there's a very considerable expense for all of those um green stormwater management elements that I listed. And from my point of view, a slight increase of three feet, which is not substantial around that existing uh, facility, you know, and we can talk about that a little bit more, would be just a great way to to try to achieve the goals that we're trying to achieve. But also do it in a way where we're not you know, for for the two new residences causing, causing an undue burden, number one. And then also, too, there are maintenance considerations in the future. So it would not add to a maintenance concern because that element would already be, you know, need need to be maintained in the future as well as everything else. So just a couple of thoughts, you know, for.
Yeah, and tha- thanks for pointing out of the other things that you have going on around the site. I think we did hear about those earlier in the other meeting, and I had forgotten about them. Thank you.
It's shown on one of the other slides.
Could Mr. Thonay uh, address some of those same points? Uh, especially the um the question of whether there, you can have onsite uh, stormwater management resources, which um would help to uh further mitigate the stormwater increase due to climate change. John?
Well, fir- first of all, let me just say that the reason for the recommendations on additional conservation areas was to stimulate a discussion such as uh is taking place right now. And I uh, I I I'm very pleased that the applicant has has not disappointed us in in discussing this. And and quite frankly, the planning board uh also has not disappointed us. We we want this to be discussed. We would like the buffers, the conservation easement maximize, but we recognize the uh issues being raised by the applicant's engineer uh, as being worthy of consideration. Particularly on uh on the uh lot one. I'm, I'm not completely sold on the fact that it would be we shouldn't have that uh, a good buffer on the southern part of lot one. I am inclined to think we could maintain a good conservation easement there with some carefully written language, as uh was suggested that might be possible uh, by uh Mr. Miller. So, wh- what I would recommend is that the uh towns professionals and uh, and the applicant uh, sit down and and look at it from the perspective of how do we make this? Uh, how do we maximize the saving of of existing trees that aren't being proposed to be cut down right now? And still accomplish the objectives of being able to get in and maintain the basin, leaving a little room in case it has to be expanded. I I think it's, I I I believe uh, from having been working with the the applicant's engineer and from the comments I've heard from the board members that uh I think I I would be personally very comfortable with the town's professionals and the applicant knowing what our objectives are as the neighbors. Um, to really just maximize it, but but, you know, just do the best you can. And we would appreciate that.
I'm sorry.
Now that the other question uh, that uh uh, Bill was asking me was, you know, uh, can we can we put more stormwater management on the site? And of course, the answer is yes. And that's actually uh one of the issues coming up in my direct testimony. Soon.
And do these qualify as non-structural strategies?
Yes, generally, uh, uh, things like a uh, non-structural is um, is a, is a term that was used particularly in Princeton's uh old stormwater ordinance. Uh, which is the ordinance that is being used to review this. This is not being reviewed under Princeton's new ordinance. The reason being that um, it was submitted prior to the application was started prior to uh, the time when Princeton's new stormwater rules became operative. And as a result, it's the old rules. Now, the good news is that uh, other than some language differences, the old rules really aren't that different than the new rules. But in the old rules, they use this uh strange uh sentence. It says that in meeting the stormwater management um, standards, the applicant must utilize non-structural stormwater management strategies to the maximum extent practicable. Now, I don't think practicable is really a word. But that, that's been used for a long time. And one of the reasons that they changed the rules is that people, you know, would say, well, I don't really know what that means. What is the maximum extent practicable? Um, so in the new rules, they try to make it more specific. And in the new rules, I mean, they're telling you to maximize uh what they call non-structural and low-impact development measures. The low-impact development measure um, could be uh a dry well. A uh, a non-structural measure could be a rain garden. Um, a non-structural measure uh could be uh utilizing permeable pavers uh for your driveways instead of just paving. So, under your rules, both your new rules and your old rules, you're actually supposed to be maximizing on each individual site these non-structural and low-impact development stormwater management strategies. So that's just something to keep in mind. It's, this is sort of the way stormwater management is going. And uh you'll, you'll see that the applicant has actually anticipated that to some extent. And if I continue with my direct testimony, I'll explain, you know, that was anticipated.
Yes, pla- please uh go right ahead.
Well, uh, let me finish with the notes. Uh, because I always look at notes on plans. They they make a difference. And the next note that we wanna look at is on sheet five, which is the grading plan. And the note says property owners are encouraged, and I'm emphasizing encouraged, to implement low-maintenance landscaping, encouraging water retention, planting native vegetation, and minimizing the use of fertilizers and pesticides. And, you know, I certainly endorse that idea. Uh, but what uh I think they need to do is more than encourage. So I would rewrite this to say the same note on on sheet five to say individual property owners shall develop and implement onsite low-maintenance landscaping and non-structural stormwater management strategies. I would also add, subject to the review and approval of Princeton Township's engineer to facilitate onsite water retention, ensure planting of native vegetation, and minimize the use of fertilizers and pesticides. So all I'm trying to do is make it clear that there's a deed restriction on each of these that requires this. And that uh, the the town engineer gets a shot at reviewing it before it's done. Doesn't change what's being proposed at all. It doesn't even change the intent of what is being proposed. But it strengthens the language, and it would be, uh, I would believe, written into the deed. Then there's another note, also on.
John, John, if we can stay with that for a second.
Of course.
Ryan, do you have a a reaction to that? Are you okay with that, or?
Well, um the 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 issue there, uh, the town has a stormwater ordinance that doesn't necessarily require every change to go by the engineer. So uh, we think that the, it just didn't note um, perhaps combined with it being also put on uh, uh, the um the plot plans so that it's passed over to the new owners specifically. Uh, but we're, we are concerned with with binding each site to visit the town engineers with every change in landscaping going uh, forward, well, when uh, uh, that exceeds the the requirements of, you know, they'll they'll certainly be subject to uh, the town's stormwater management ordinance for for changes. But I I, um, we'd be concerned with putting that level of of direct scrutiny uh on each individual homeowner. Uh, and they'll, there will be an engineering review at the uh um, apologies, not a plot plan, but uh, uh, you know, at at the construction phase as well.
Yeah, I I I would just add that I I don't think that it's feasible that the engineering department should be looking at landscape plans uh, as a general rule, beyond what they're already responsible for, because they have uh, very, very full plates as it is and is as sympathetic uh, as I am, and I am super sympathetic to sustainable landscape practices. I don't wanna make the engineering department the the yard police, but um Mr. Cohen, I'm sorry to have preempted your comment.
Not at all. I I I just wanted to make a suggestion. I think the problem here is conflating two separate issues into the same note. One being stormwater management for the ultimate plans of the individual houses, which will be subject to engineering review. But conflating that with lands, you know, low impact, low-impact landscaping, which will not necessarily be uh, subject to engineering review. So I think this note needs to be subdivided into two notes. And then the note about the uh stormwater management practices can be as strong as Mr. Thonay is uh, requesting, because that is what we would expect. As a matter of course, when they come for a building permit.
Uh, may I speak? I think I agree with David. The uh, I don't think anyone would object to changing the wording from encourage to shall. I think that's a, that's a pretty simple one. The the issue is overburdening the uh uh, the town engineer with every little change that uh comes in. But I I I think you can explain that by the notes. And again, I would I raise the issue to raise this discussion. It's happening. And I would leave it to the uh, uh, towns professionals and the uh, and the applicants professionals. Do you now, I think they have a feel for what my client is looking for and for the uh opinions of the board. And come up with a s- a solution that does a little better than what we've got right now.
Da- David, wh- what if we just took out the language, starting the second line? As structural, uh, as non-structural stormwater management strategies, subject to review and approval of the Princeton Township engineer? And John, just for your information, the Princeton Township, there's been no Princeton Township engineer for many years, because Princeton Township was eliminated years ago. But to fac- to facilitate uh onsite water retention, what if that just came out, David, would um, what's your reaction to that?
Subject to, subject to review and approval of the township.
No, it would be taking out the whole, the whole reference to stormwater management, starting with as non-structural stormwater management strategies subject to review and approval of the township engineer, uh, of the Princeton Township engineer to facilitate onsite water retention.
It is a non-structural stormwater management strategy.
I'm sorry, say again, Bill?
Uh, it would be a a non-structural stormwater management strategy. Uh, and you can have a booklet of possible options for a homeowner at the time they purchase, at the time they get a uh, construction permit.
Yeah, I think we should actually give Dan Weisman an opportunity to respond to this because he knows what our engineering department does. And um
Thanks, that's an excellent suggestion. Not seeing you on my screen, is Dan? There we go.
Uh, Dan, you you have not been sworn in, correct?
I have not, no.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give be the truth?
I do.
So I just wanna refer.
So our stormwater management ordinance is um, actually above and beyond what standard D E P stormwater requirements are. Um, we break down minor projects from major projects, um, residential, single-family projects, um, get categorized as a small project. So anytime there'd be an increase in impervious surface greater than four hundred square feet, um, requires review and approval by um the town engineer. Um, and that four hundred square feet is cumulative from uh, twenty seventeen. So, these projects, as they are new, they would contribute to that um cumulative amount. So if they, someone came in with this and added fifty square feet, um, any additional stormwater management would be uh, would require the approval of the town, and they would have to go through engineering approval.
Just realizing that the two simple rectangles. I don't, I, the the writing is too small for me to identify which lots these are, but the two simple rectangles are new construction. They're gonna be coming for building plan review when, when somebody gets ready to build them. And at that point, engineering will look at the plans. I guess if the, the actual plans, which will be different from these plans, but if the actual plans don't increase the impervious coverage beyond what's shown on these plans, then the the stormwater management that's shown on these plans will be able to remain unaltered. But if they increase above that four hundred square foot level, then the modifications will have to meet our current ordinance. Is that correct?
Uh, if they change based off of just what's submitted here with the initial application, they will have to require review to ensure that um, the capacity of the system. So say they do add a hundred square feet on each lot or on one lot. they will require re-review as it is an increase in impervious. If it's overdesigned to account for, you know, a certain amount, great. We can account for that. We'll certainly look at it when the the plans come in.
So that, does that address the question of the wording in the note? I want to go back to that because I or do we still need to change or set separate that one note into two to separate stormwater from landscaping as Mr. Cohen suggested?
I think what Jerry was suggesting was since the stormwater non-structural stormwater measures or the green infrastructure measures are required under our ordinance that
Then the
in fact, that language could come out altogether. That's what Jerry was suggesting and just leave it in the gentler language relating to the landscaping.
Okay.
You know, I think that the objectors would like to see the language there about the stormwater management and have it be prescriptive. And I don't see the harm in having a separate note for the stormwater management because it just sort of reiterates what is required under our ordinance anyway.
Yeah, okay.
From that, I'll just say to the extent that's there to flag that they'd have to comply with the town's requirements, we we certainly are okay with that.
Yeah.
Are we ready to continue? And I think.
Yes, can you continue with your direct testimony, please?
Well, we have another relevant note to what to our discussions. On sheet five, grading plan, there is a residential lot drainage note, and it states, drainage basin includes capacity to manage up to 13% lot coverage for lots 2.01 and 2.03 that shall be conveyed to the basin as part of the future lot development. Any future additional impervious coverage beyond 13% to a maximum of 19.5% for lot 2.01 and 17% for lot 2.03 respectively, shall be managed on an individual lot of origin. So basically what these plans are, the applicant has prepared the plans to say, we've designed the basin. It'll only serve lot 2.01 and 2.03. Those are the two lots where new homes will be built. And they can only have up to 13% impervious coverage. If in the future they want to do more than that, they will have to manage it on their individual lots. So does everyone understand that? That built into this already is the fact that if the owners of these homes later increase the impervious coverage, they've got to manage that stormwater on the site. And I would assume that that would also be subject to review of the of the town's engineer.
That's correct.
His engineer as as Dan has told us. And we agree with that. I think that's a good point. But that should, that should also be in the deed. You know, the people, you know, they got to know what they're what they're buying. And the other thing is, I think that what we're ignoring here is that this is not a two lot subdivision. This is a four lot subdivision. There, it is true that the the two existing homes are going to remain. And at the present time, there is no plan for increasing impervious coverage on those two. But but the the percentage of impervious coverage will go up immediately because the lots are smaller. And it, so I think there should be a similar restriction. Because right now, the runoff from lot one and lot 2.02 just runs off into the swale and into Harry's Brook and onto the properties of my client. If in the future those the owners of those homes, whoever they may be, want to increase the impervious coverage, then I would say that those lots should also have a deed restriction that they are only allowed a certain, anything over the existing impervious coverage, which would have to be determined based on the new lots and the and the existing impervious coverage. If in the future, they want to add more, they can add more up to a certain specified percent, just like they've done for the other two lots. And they would have to manage that stormwater in accordance with the township's rules. So there's no increase in runoff onto neighboring properties onsite. That's the identical, that's identically.
Yeah, yes, I, but I, I guess I want to ask Mr. Weisman to, again, I, as I understand it, if the homeowners, the owners of the existing homes added impervious coverage more than a very minimal amount, what is it? 450 square feet, 500 square feet?
400.
400, okay, thanks, should know that. They do have to come, they do have to manage it onsite with green stormwater infrastructure, and they do need, so I'll stop talking and let Dan pick it up from there. But I think I think the town's ordinance requires exactly what you're saying, Mr. Sonae. Dan, am I right?
You, you're absolutely right. I don't really have much to add. It's anything over 400 square feet requires engineering, you know, municipality of Princeton needs to review and approve that. All green water, all all green infrastructure. So the ordinance.
On onsite, yeah.
Yes, onsite.
Okay, I thank you. I thank you, Dan.
I would just like to pipe in, though, that I agree with Mr. Sonae that for the two new structures, it should be noted in the deed that there's that 13% limit that's handled offsite because that's not going to relate to something in our ordinance. And the fact that they have to handle any additional stormwater on their own site. I think it's, it makes sense to have that be in the, you know, with deference to Jerry if he, hopefully he agrees with that.
Oh, yeah, I absolutely agree.
Right. Good.
I would point out, David, that the reason for the 13% on the 2.01 and 2.03 is because the detention basin only serves those two lots, and it's been designed for that.
Exactly.
So that that's the 13%. I'm not sure how that applies to the other two lots because I don't even know, they may be over 13% already.
Right. It doesn't apply to them at all. That's why I'm I'm making a distinction. I agree with you on the two new lots.
Yep, okay.
I don't think we should be putting anything in the deed on the other two lots. They're going to be governed by our ordinance.
Next, can I move on?
Please.
The the second part of the residential drainage, residential lot drainage note on sheet five says, as part of future plot plan preparation, disconnect roof leader drains from storm system with a vegetated area such as a lawn, a grass whale, or other. I I think I wrote it down here wrong, other areas. And I I agree with that. But again, I would say this is a four lot subdivision. And if as part of the plot plans for these new homes, we're being careful to catch that clean runoff and direct our roof leaders and to grass swales or lawn areas or rain gardens. Why aren't we doing that for the other two lots in this subdivision right now? How hard would it be to direct the clean roof runoff from the existing homes? And just make sure that it's disconnected? You know, it has to go through a grass swell or or through a lawn area before getting into a drainage swell or a main channel. Why don't we make it the same role?
That involves substantial expenditure of money?
No. No, it doesn't.
What is the board's reaction to that suggestion?
Mr. O'Donnell?
Well, I just, my main question regarding that is, is it our purview to change requirements for existing construction? Or are we primarily concerned with develop, you know, the the areas that are to be developed?
It's a new, these are new subdivisions. So in that respect, it's, it's not probably this condition of the four lot subdivision.
The applicant's concern is.
Just so happens that two of the lots.
I'd like Mr. Muller to address the central question Owen raised as to whether the the board has jurisdiction, if you will, to ask requirement, ask or require changes in stormwater management approaches at the existing homes, which I I gather are as simple as disconnecting, you know, just making sure that the that the gutters flow onto lawn area as opposed to into an underground pipe that goes into the storm sewer system. But Jerry, could you speak to that? And then David's got his hand.
Yeah, I think the board has the authority to do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
David?
Yeah, I'll just pipe in on that because the size of the lots is being decreased, even though the existing homes are not being changed. They're, they're intensifying the use of those existing homes. So I think it's perfectly reasonable for us to put some conditions on that. And I I just wanted to ask Mr. Milak whether he knows anything about what, how the storm, you know, the roof leaders and such are handled on the existing houses. So, you know, it may be, it may be a total non-issue. They may be already complying.
Um, I I think I can say I recollect that on lot 2.02, the existing main house on the right, I believe there are roof leader drains that daylight at some location within the lawn. And I would presume that it discharges and then sort of that natural forested area obviously provides additional filtration and sort of non-structural, you know, function before the water actually gets to the water course. My concern with this is the slope in the back of the yard on lot 2.02 is not that great. And we also need to be mindful about on existing homes forcing a disconnection with limited area to manage that, you know, if there's sort of low slope and soggy soil near a foundation and things like that. I'm just a little hesitant to 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 agree to modify those existing conditions with some, you know, design when here we're really not changing anything. So it's just, it's just a concern of mine. I'm not positive of the the operations in terms of the roof leader drains on lot one. But as you can see, the footprint of the non-forested area on lot one is really minimal. And there's a substantial amount of wooded area, again, from a non-structural standpoint, which is still slowing that water down. And it's still, you know, providing filtration sort of in a natural passive way. So, you know, I I understand Mr. Sonae's concept of these existing lots. However, I I even think that the the site configuration here lends itself to, you know, providing that function without meddling, if that makes sense.
Mr. Cohen?
Oh, I'm sorry, I just
Didn't raise.
I hadn't lowered my hand. I would, I would add, Jim, if if the if the if the town's engineer agrees, you know, you're going to be out there with them for various reasons. And you look at that and it looks okay, and it's okay. If it's not, you know, you fix it.
You know, and I I very much appreciate the flexibility and the deference that you're showing. I I really do. I I want to make sure that we put this to bed though, and don't leave a lot of loose ends because I I don't want to say, oh, well, if the engineering department agrees to this or the engineering department agrees to that. I mean, we we defer to them a lot on these things. And and I do think that we could require that this go to the landscape committee so that we get one last, you know, look at the landscape issues. But that is, you know, we can you know, sort of look at stormwater, but it's not a stormwater review.
These could be conditions of approval. You don't need to delay an approval of the project to require, you know, basically ask the the engineer for the town and the engineer for the applicant to look and see where the roof leaders are going now, and if it's okay. If it's okay, it's okay.
Yeah, okay. All right.
So those are the, those are the main notes on the plans, which have, are really related to various notes put on the plan that they mean something, but they're easy to overlook. I have two main questions regarding stormwater management that I think should also be discussed. And the first one is, does this project actually meet your stormwater ordinance where it says that stormwater management will be accomplished to the maximum extent practicable with non-structural stormwater management strategies? When the only not, they they do have, absolutely have non-structural stormwater management strategies on the new construction, 2.01 and 2.03. But there is absolutely no such non-structural stormwater management proposed on the other two lots. So exactly how do you say, you know, it, there, there is an argument to be made that you could take lot one and lot 2.02 and design them with rain gardens to, you know, and and thereby meet the requirements of your ordinance that you've maximized non-structural stormwater management strategies for the project because now all lots have them. But I I don't see how you can even make a finding that it it has maximized the use of such strategies when it's only on oh, way less than half the proper.
I think you've answered your question. It's it's not a maximum non-structural strategy unless you take those extra steps.
Well, I, I'd actually, I I think I also saw Mr. Stupian was in the meeting with us. And maybe he's the best person to respond to that.
Joe Stupian, can you, there you are.
Good evening, folks.
Have you been sworn in yet for this application?
Joe, I believe, I believe it's the last meeting, but I'd be delighted to do it again.
Yeah, I don't think you were actually. If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed?
Yeah. What we're dealing with is is not a stormwater question. It's 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 an ordinance question. It's a, it's planning board question. I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to dodge a bullet or pass a buck. But other than the comments in my stormwater report, this meets the stormwater requirements of the development. Whether the board wants to require that on existing portions of the lot that aren't being proposed to be changed, and that if they are changed in the future, would have to meet an ordinance, that's I, that's not my decision. It's unusual. I've never, you know, I've been working for Princeton for a long time. But the the proposal is to create two new lots.
Mr. Scoob, you have to ask him a question?
And the stormwater that's proposed meets the ordinance. If the if the ordinance also applies to the other two lots that. If the, if the ordinance also applies to the other two lots that other than their lot configuration and size is going to change, that's, that's not my decision.
Well, Mr. Scoopian, asking a question. If there are additional steps that can be taken to further control stormwater runoff quality and quantity through non-structural strategies that are not being taken, then I think by definition, it is not meeting the non-structural strategies requirement. Don't you agree?
No.
You don't?
No, sir.
By definition.
No, sir, it does not. It says the maximum extent practicable.
And how is that defined?
Well, go, go, let, let Joe finish his statement.
All right.
Unless you'd like to continue?
Go ahead, Joe.
Maximum extent practicable, I agree, is, is a, is a, is a rather soft term. It was put in the original rules and in the ordinance and in following the rules. It is used by the EPA in the Clean Water Act and, and in their stage four regulations. And it's basically what is practical to use, what, and what will have a practical effect? Or have a practical chance of achieving what we're trying to achieve. Okay, so it's not, it, it's not a matter of do everything you can. It's a matter of doing what is considered to be practically useful in achieving your goals and practical in terms of construction and maintenance and operation and safety and aesthetics. We have the, the township, township, excuse me, thank you, John. Princeton has, uses the non-structural strategies point system, which was developed by DEP to help resolve in a, in a quantitative, objective way. Do we meet practicable? And I haven't, I don't have the most recent one, but the earlier ones that I submitted for the project meet that. That's something that we've always used in Princeton to help answer that practicable question. Now, I also did not hear that anything again, that there was no request to provide any more on the two new lots and the two, and the new construction associated. What I'm hearing is, can the other two lots do more? And again, that, that's just, that's, that's not an engineering question. That's a jurisdiction question. And I'll have to get that back to the attorneys.
I've long been bothered by that word practicable too. A slightly different way of looking at it, but, but it does go back a long way. And and I completely agree with you, Mr. Scoopian, that this is a, that, you know, the question is whether this board wants to assert this requirement on existing, on the existing lots. Mr. Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I, I know this may sound a little bit contradictory to what I was saying before about detaching, you know, disconnecting the stormwater leaders and stuff, but I honestly feel like the language that the objector is relying on here, where it says, you know, you have to do this to the maximum, maximum extent possible or practicable. That's intended to say with stormwater that you're intended to manage, you have to do it to the maximum extent possible with these non-structural measures. But our ordinance is actually super clear about whether they're required to manage stormwater on these two lots with the existing houses. And it does not require it. And so that's, that's why I, I mean, I guess I'm getting to the same place that Joe was, but following a different route. But I think that you absolutely can say that this application is compliant, fully compliant with that language in our ordinance because it's using non-structural measures to manage every drop of rainwater that's required to be managed on this application. And by the way, I'll just mention, you know, the flood and stormwater committee, you know, a year and a half or two ago was looking really hard at whether we could impose requirements for stormwater management on redevelopment projects. We never actually succeeded in getting that passed. But with the language that we were looking at for redevelopment, even under that language, these two lots would not have been required to do any stormwater management because there's no new impermeable coverage created on them. So I, I think it's a real stretch to say that we have the authority to suddenly turn around and say that these two lots have to manage their stormwater as though it's new construction.
May I chime in?
Yes.
First of all, I, I respect everyone's opinion in this. I think you're thinking it through really well. I would like to add one more thought. It's the project, not the lots that need to be incorporate these non-structural measures to the maximum extent practicable. It's not the lots. And that's not what your ordinance says. It's the project. And this project has created four lots. Well, you know, if I, in an ideal world, if I were designing this project, I would have infiltration facilities on all four lots. And the reason I would have those infiltration facilities on all four lots is that that would mimic the natural condition of infiltration on the property. And therefore, it wouldn't be necessary to take all this runoff from the two new developed lots and put it into a basin and infiltrate it right next to the boundary of my client's properties. Which then, you know, their, their lawns are pretty soggy when it rains now. And now we're putting even more water. We're taking what used to fall on these two lots and put it in one spot right next to my client's property. So I think I respect the, the thought process and I think it's well thought out. But I think you're wrong. And I think it's crystal clear that this project does not meet your stormwater ordinance.
And that adds to that point. I think Mr. Scoopian said that it was appropriate to use the non-structural strategies point system, which was the subject of the lawsuit about 10 years ago where the appellate division, and I argued the case, so I, I should remember the name of it. The appellate division struck down the use of the point system because it was never the subject of public hearings. There was no basis provided for it. It was simply a black box.
No, sir. When you're done, I'd like to respond.
Are you going to tell me that the appellate division has been reversed?
No, sir.
Go ahead, Mr. Ian.
Yeah, if you read, if you read the appellate, the appellate court's decision, they clearly state that they are in no way making any statement regarding the accuracy or replicability, or I forget the exact words. I'm not, I'm not the attorney. But they were in no way ruling on whether the point system was an accurate procedure. They were simply saying that the department was using that procedure as part of their rulemaking process, ruled, rule, as part of their rules in determining whether an, an application met their stormwater rules and that they had not adopted the point system as part of their rule. And they clearly said that unlike the Canal Commission, the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission had adopted the point system as part of their rule and therefore was perfectly entitled to use it, but that the Department of Environmental Protection was using the point system, but had not gone through the adoption process to make it part of their rule and that therefore the decision they reached using the point system was not valid. And that they wished to use the, the point system, they simply had to go back and incorporate it, adopt it as part of their rules like the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission. And there's a footnote in that finding that specifically states that they are not passing any judgment on the accuracy or the, the, whether this point system is a good mathematical tool, but simply that the department needs to adopt it as part of their stormwater rules if they're going to use it to decide whether a project meets the stormwater rules.
Well, I think we all can all read the opinion. I think we can all read the court's opinion or Jerry, you can read it.
I can provide it right now if you'd like.
But I think, I, I believe that our own evaluation of stormwater, the adequacy of stormwater management systems, whether or not the, the checklist is, is required, which it is, we're still looking at calculations and flow rates and infiltration and water quality and all of that stuff. It, it, it is not, the engineering department is not hanging its hat on the point system. Please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Weissman or Mr. Scoopian. I mean, they're looking at the at the numbers and the science and, and not the checklist. Is is that correct?
Well, yeah, the, the ordinance requires the checklist, the ordinance requires the non-structural point system and then also a review of all the numbers. Yeah, it's so it's part of the rulemaking. It's not rulemaking. It's part of the review process to decide whether or not a project meets the stormwater rules. I'm sorry, excuse me, the Princeton stormwater control ordinance. Too many rules around here.
I agree with you. There is a definition in the ordinance 2017 dash 30, the stormwater management ordinance. Said maximum extent practicable means compliance with the specific objective to the greatest extent possible, taken into account equitable considerations and competing factors, including but not limited to environmental benefits, pollution removal, effectiveness, regulatory compliance, ability to implement given site-specific environmental conditions, cost and technical or engineering feasibility. I, I think that really says to me that each, each case has to be looked at separately and you may have different features that are maintained in a different context and, and each, each decision is made on its own merits. I think that is a proper approach. And I think that's what we're trying to do here.
I think we've really thoroughly vetted this. I don't know if you can do anything more on this.
I, I, I agree. I think you've heard all sides.
I just want to respond to Mr. Thonay's point. You know, saying that this is really the whole project and we shouldn't be looking at the individual lots. And I agree with that. If there were no subdivision happening here, if our ordinance allowed multiple primary residences on a single residential lot, which I know it doesn't, but if it did, then the stormwater management, so, so say this is all one lot and we're adding these two new structures and keeping two existing ones. The stormwater management on this project, the entire project completely meets our local stormwater regulations. And that's, that's the point.
I, I thank all of you. This is a very good, frank discussion. I only have one more stormwater issue to raise for discussion.
Okay, go right ahead.
All right. In it's important to protect public health, safety and welfare. It's an overriding consideration, I know, for professional engineers. So for the last year, I've been recommending to my clients that they over-design their projects to take into account the impacts of climate change. Well, much to my surprise, in April, we got, the DEP had a press release announcing they have a new online extreme precipitation tool. And that they have determined that all of the runoff volumes, the rainfall volumes that we've been using for the two, the 10, the 50, the 100-year floods are wrong. They're outdated. They were right in 1999. But of course, that was 23 years ago and, and they're getting a little nervous about using rainfall data. That's almost a quarter of a century out of date. They've also projected what the increases will be through the end of the century so that towns and engineers and developers can all plan their projects properly to protect public health, safety and welfare. And they are recommending online that every planning board, every engineer, every developer incorporate the use of this tool in the design of projects going forward. And the, the increases in, in the volumes of runoff are very significant by the end of the century. So my real question is, is this? When your ordinance says you have to design the project to cut the two-year flood rate in half. Or you have to design your project so your detention basin will release only 75% of the 10-year flood, or in the case of 100-year flood, that you'll design your basin so that it will only release 80% of the 100-year flood. What is the 100-year flood? And the 10-year flood? And the two-year flood? Is it the two-year flood the way it was in 1999? Or is it supposed to be you know, the volume of rainfall as it is today? Or is it supposed to be designed to protect the people downstream in the future? Your ordinance doesn't actually require you to use any particular numbers for what 100-year flood is. It is perfectly appropriate for you to use the online extreme precipitation tool put out by the DEP to determine in the future what it would be and to then use those numbers to design the project exactly in accordance with your ordinance. And otherwise, I'm not sure how you can make the claim that you're protecting public health, safety and welfare. And I think that is an issue that really should be discussed. Because there's so much going on. I mean, Yeah. You know, there's, in fact, there's a lot going on right here in Princeton. You know, you've got a lot of those low, moderate income housing developments and, and other housing developments. There, there must be four or five developments going on right in the watershed, the train stand right, right by Meadowbrook and, and eventually to Harry's Brook and down to Carnegie Lake. All of these are being developed, my understanding is, using rainfall data that's almost a quarter of a century outdated. So what are we going to do about that?
Thanks. I, I hear you. I, I think we all do. Ms. Sax. You're, you're muted.
I'm increasingly uncomfortable with this hearing. We seem to be venturing farther and farther afield into subjective analysis and you know, debating the, the finer points of some of our ordinances and, and I, I'm not hearing from you, Jerry. I'm not hearing from I, I, you know, I, I just, it seems very theoretical, the discussion right now. I'm not sure that this is the place of specific hearing about this application to have these sorts of theoretical debates. And I, I feel like that we're at a particular disadvantage because we don't have Jim Purcell, who was our land use engineer who normally Who normally um deals with uh who has the most experience working with um these issues. And I I'll just say as a board member, I feel, you know, we are not getting guidance tonight from our professionals. Um, and um. There's a lot of theoretical speculative matter being floated here. Um. And um, you know, some of the stuff that's discussed here, that's being discussed here is is, you know, I I I know being debated in the Stormwater Commission. But if someone could um frame specifically. What uh the context is for the decisions that the board needs to make tonight. Um, and if we're not able to get a um. A a concrete read on our um existing ordinances and how they apply to the application, then. Um, I think we're in trouble. So.
Well, I I I think.
Go ahead, Jerry.
Yeah, I think Mr. Thonay is is entitled to make the argument he's making, but. We did hear from our own stormwater management professional, Joe Scoopian, who said it. It complies. Um, he gave his professional opinion on that, as he did at the last hearing. And Joe, I realized I had sworn in previously. Uh, and I think he says so in his report as well. Is that correct, Joe?
My turn to be muted. Yes, sir. Where there are some, there are some items in the report. Um, numbers that need to be matched up between sheets and and computer programs and all. But there's nothing and and Jim and I have gone through it, Jim by Jim Purcell. And also the applicant's engineer, we've gone through it. These are details that need to be taken care of. But yes, the the, in my opinion, the site. Hasn't, you know, as we interpret it, uh meets the town's stormwater control ordinance.
And we heard also from Mr. Weissman about what what would be required uh of the existing homeowners if they did. Uh, a and the uh owners of the proposed dwellings, if they did um. Add impervious cover over and above what's either there or what's proposed. Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I just want to give the applicant a chance to respond because uh coming full circle to the way this meeting started. I think they came prepared to talk about the ability and willingness. To exceed the current requirements and to um take a step at least in the direction. Of what the objector is asking for. So I'd like to hear really what the applicant's willing to do in terms of uh going beyond current requirements.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Cohen. Um, and and firstly, obviously, we we agree with your professionals and and everything that's been said tonight. Um, we agree that the uh proposal complies with the requirements. Um, we had all been sitting on the edge of seats waiting for new requirements that have not arrived. Now, having said that, um, our engineers done some additional calculations uh and there is a considerable. Um, I I I use the word considerable. I'll let the engineer use a a real word that's appropriate. Um, uh either with a few tweaks to the current sign or even in the current design. Um, capacity to go uh closer, not to the rule that um. Has was thrown out and 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 withdrawn and didn't arrive. But Jim, let me just, why don't you just talk for a few minutes about? Um, you know, your your calculations as to the basin and where you think it puts us in terms of future flows.
Sure, so um just to give everybody some perspective, we took some time um and we we looked at that. Uh, climate precipitation tool and ran some of the projected numbers through the existing sim. Basically, the existing basin that we have outlet structure, et cetera. Um, and in particular, what we found is that if we use, they have two scenarios. One, if there's a more extreme um rainfall because not enough is done and if. Uh, other methods are implemented, then it'll result in slightly less uh rainfall in the future. And basically what we did is we routed the, we're in the year twenty twenty-two right now. Um, and they have a twenty twenty number through twenty sixty-nine increased rainfall depth. Which was what uh Mr. Thonay was speaking of. Uh, and if we use the most conservative or worst-case scenario of the R C P of eight point five. And we run that through our system um with those increased flows using that same number. Uh, for the existing and the proposed, a greater amount of water flowing through our site and the different elements. Um, we can provide for the percent reductions uh for that twenty twenty-two increased rainfall depth. Um. With the existing basin that we have currently designed with a minor modification of. Just shifting the length of a weir and the outlet structure uh without any real significant impacts. Now that, you know, there's been some talk of um that would be utilized, excuse me, utilizing. Uh, the projected mean for the uh twenty twenty through twenty seventy. So it's basically the next. Average projected estimated rainfall for the next fifty years. Um, we feel that we can route that through our system. Um, not really have to make any substantial changes to what we have here and still provide for. Uh, those net reductions required the fifty, seventy-five and eighty for the two, ten, the hundred. So. Um. You know, perhaps that that gives the applicant a little uh, the objector a little perspective in terms of. If those flows do it, you know, um, do continue to climb using those numbers, that's what would result.
I uh would like to thank Jim for doing that, and I'd like to also. Uh, inform Jim that that is uh, I've confirmed the same thing on projects I've been working on and doing this for. Um, and that's why I didn't think it was unreasonable because there is nothing in Princeton's ordinance that doesn't allow you to do more. And uh, since we are in the public health, safety and welfare business, both as licensed professional engineers. And as members of the planning board. I think what Jim did is admirable. And I I hope that the the applicant will design the project as necessary to ensure that. Even going forward into the future. It's doing the job and I and I thank Jim for. Not just this time, we've been talking now over the last few years. Um, it's been such a pleasure of working with him and also with the Princeton's professionals. I thank you all.
Yeah, Jim, could you tell us uh whether the applicant would be willing to do that tweaking you talked about and what that involves? It didn't sound like it was very substantial.
Yes, they they would be willing to make those slight modifications. Again, it's it's not substantial. Um, utilizing, uh, like I said, the the R C P of eight point five. With the twenty twenty through twenty sixty-nine numbers uh pre and post and getting our net reduction. So there's a little buffer in there for the next fifty years.
Okay.
Great.
Good, thank you. Um, any more testimony from um the objectors, Mr. Potter? Or your uh expert witnesses or Jerry, were you, did you have other questions?
I think it's all the testimony. I I would point out.
Good, go ahead.
I did not, I'm sorry. I I I talked to to two attorneys at the same time, which is always a bad idea, but um. Jerry, I I I did not know whether you had finished, uh, whether you had any other uh questions to pose before I asked Mr. Potter. If he had any additional expert witnesses. So Jerry first.
Yeah, just just for Mr. Thonay, the one point that was not covered in your summary was the last point on page two about the drywalls. You want to. Dry wells, do you want to comment on it?
Uh, yes, um. I like drywells. Uh, towns don't necessarily like them. They do require maintenance. And it's always a matter of whether or not they do it, but um. For my entire lifetime, I've always tried to get the water clean runoff from rooftops into the ground. Because that's where it should be. You know, the water, when you develop a property, less water goes into the ground than before. So I just try to design my projects to make sure that at least we get uh the annual storm. And sometimes considerably more recharge back into the groundwater because that's the water that feeds the stream. And keeps it flowing, and that also protects the water quality in the stream. So and I I always do it on each individual house because when you do it at the end of the line. You're you're basically collecting stormwater from the entire property and recharging it into one place where it's always next to somebody else's property. So I always try to spread it around because that's as close as you can get uh with development to uh. Uh, mimicking the recharge that takes place. So I I just think it's a simple thing. I know it's a, it's hard to enforce people, you know, to clean their drywells. But uh, you know, I've had them. I cleaned them. It's really not that big a deal.
Is it okay if our engineer respond to that real quickly?
Sure.
Yes.
Sure, um, I I guess the first thing I I would say is that we do intend to meet the groundwater recharge requirement for. You know, the new impervious and returning providing the total required um groundwater recharge for the site. Uh, additionally, based upon the testing throughout the site, you know, the geology does change depending on where you are. And the facilities that we've located are in specific areas where that is suitable. Um, so I think. We have to keep that in mind that we really don't have free rein um for. You know, an innumerable amount of locations for drywells. Um, additionally, Mr. Weissman may need, you know, may want to chime in on this, but. Um, Princeton has been discouraging even myself as a designer on various projects to avoid the use of drywells. Really at any cost possible and use every other alternative. Um, in order to achieve, you know, infiltration goals just because of the problems of failure over time. Um, issues, you know, potentially with basements, things like that. So um. Uh, they may work well on on certain sites where, you know, the the geology is well suited. Uh, again, here, this is not a sort of a great uh open field type of condition um to achieve that. And um, and then I would say that, you know, with those swell features that we've. We've incorporated between each of the elements, you know, we have incor- uh incorporated some uh additional features for that. Plus, we have those passive repairing corridor with all the trees and the conservation easement, et cetera. You know, further slowing that water down. So um. And one more thing to just point out, in that southerly corner, just to to provide a little color to Mr. Thonay's. Sensitivity, which I think is warranted relative to that, the base into the property line. Um, the residential structures are, you know, approximately uh between two hundred and fifty and three hundred feet away. Uh, from that facility and in between, we have a stream, you know, which provides a boundary condition. Um, to convey water away. So it's not like a hundred feet away or fifty feet from that basin. We have a residential dwelling and it doesn't show that well on the map. Um, but there is a considerable distance and, you know, you could see that when you looked at that uh forest exhibit. So just. Um, you know, to be kind of friend, offer a friendly response and a little perspective. I just wanted to share that about the drywells.
Thank you, Jim.
Mr. Weissman, do you want to add anything about um? Drywells in Princeton?
Sure, um, just that our ordinance for small projects um does permit. Drywells under a certain understanding that about seven other green infrastructure measures. Um, can be assessed first. Um, it's mainly used as a last resort for green infrastructure. Um. So it's something that's not entirely disallowed throughout town, but extremely discouraged.
Yes, I wherever Jim Purcell is, his eyes are twitching or something I. Um, yeah, they 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 have not proven um. Uh, to be, you know, successful in in Princeton by and large. And um our colleagues at the Stony Brook Millstone Watershed Association also. Have appealed uh to Princeton to not ins- you know. Uh, rely on them. So um, any other, any other questions, Mr. Muller?
No, I I don't have any.
Uh, Mr. Potter, do you have any other um testimony to offer? Before we open to the public, we need to um.
Oh, no, I would like to make a closing comment if I may.
Okay, go right ahead.
I'm very short. Um. I I believe that all of you are trying to do the right thing. You're looking at the present as well as the future. And trying to square the two, and it is, I think, uh, as one of you said. Becoming hypothetical, theoretical, but. Climate change is here. Uh, D P has um estimated that. The two-year storm is likely to increase by as much as twenty-four percent, the ten-year storm by twenty-seven percent. And the hundred-year storm by at least fifty percent. That's in their announcement of the regulations, which we're not adopting. April nineteenth, so. I I hope you err on the side of protecting the public health and safety. Thank you very much and thank you, John Thonay. You are, I I think you could negotiate a treaty between the Palestinians and Israelis here.
It's it's easy when you have a good board and a good applicant.
Um, thank you both. Ms. Sax.
Yeah, I I um also appreciate the willingness of the applicant to go above and beyond, and I uh appreciate Mr. Thonay. Your attitude was really helpful. Um, and Mr. Potter, I agree you're with uh everything that you're saying. I I um, but I think um, that subject is a, is more. Falls more in the realm of policymaking and would be a discussion that would be better suited to council than to planning board. Where here we're really tasked with um, you know, implementing existing ordinances and um. Uh, before we reach any final decision tonight, I just want to make sure that nothing we're doing tonight. Uh, would like to have some assurance from Jerry that there's nothing that we're engaging in here that would in any way set a precedent. That um would be problematic for um other projects or, you know, in in any way. Um, because basically what we're doing tonight is um, we are accepting the goodwill of the applicant to go above and beyond, right? Or there's.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I I don't, I don't think we're going to be sending, if it's approved, um, I don't think we're sending any dangerous precedent. Any negative precedent at all.
Okay, so Mr. Potter, I hope you'll um come to counsel and raise some of those concerns because I think that's a place where they're. They're better seated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Louise, could, let me ask, um, before we go to the public, do we want to um have our professionals run quickly through their reports? Or now after the public speaks or not at all?
No, I I. Your point is well taken. I think they should go through them quickly now. Yep.
Okay, well, did they do it at the last meeting, I thought?
I don't think so. Did they?
I I thought that we had at the last meeting, to be honest with you, but um.
Oh.
But perhaps we we, just to make sure that we have the right list of conditions, uh, I that's that's important. So if uh, if my notes are incorrect, then.
But we usually do that after the public.
Do you usually do that after the public if our, well, let's see. Uh, I do recall that Dan introduced this, Dan Drabomilsky. Mr. Weissman, did you or Jim Purcell? Um. Present any uh. Summary of your of your memo last time or as far as you recall?
I don't believe, I don't believe so.
Do you have anything that you'd like to flag for the board before we hear from the public?
Um, no, I read through it earlier today. Um, Jim had put the report together, nothing that um stepped out to me. That uh needed to be flagged at this time.
Okay, and.
And Dan, I take it, everything that's emboldened in in your report, you would recommend the conditions, correct?
Uh, it's typical with what Jim would do, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, i- if if I could, Jerry, the, when we talked about this last time, I I believe there were uh two. Um. Two of the, I guess, recommendations that we talked about that uh we're not comfortable with. Uh, one is, I probably subsumed in our discussion about the conservation easement. Uh, there was an area proposed along the street uh as well as fence locations kind of in the middle of the woods that might be problematic. Uh, and then second, uh, while we were comfortable with an easement or or dedication, there was a a discussion about. Um, a a road expansion uh that uh we were unable, we did not agree with.
Okay, can you, do you have that?
A widening of of uh. Correct. That the driveway intersects. I mean, that's not. That the driveway intersects. I mean, that's not Turune or something else right there, right?
Okay, um, and what was it? So, okay, let me try to just jot these down. Um.
I'll pull the number up in a second.
That'd be great.
All right, that's uh staff comment one. Unfortunately, it's under H. So it's. Uh H one, the, the numbers restart uh several times.
Just to say.
And I'm trying to find the one about the uh conservation easement on the street that is escaping me at the moment. Uh, sorry, that is A. Two.
And then also partially A three. Where the conservation easements should be delineated with split rail fencing. Obviously, if it's within a wooded area, we don't want to create disturbance to install fencing within. You know, multi-floor rows, it's, it's even tough to, to get back through all that area. So.
And Dan Weissman, do you want to comment on those three points? The first was uh what Jim was just talking about, about the fencing, which seemed to me make good sense. Um, do you agree?
Uh, I would agree.
Okay, what about the widening of Van Dyke?
What's that requested in a conjunction with the bike lanes that are being proposed along that roadway or?
Yeah.
I would hate to.
Let me find that. Um.
Was.
It's uh H one.
That would be to be consistent with the master plan.
I guess the issue with that too, guys, is that we have that repairing corridor. That the road is crossing and obviously we're avoiding disturbances within D E P regulated areas and further encroachments. Which, you know, encompass a good, a good portion there of, of the right of way. It's really a smaller portion in front of the new lot and that, that single driveway apron, you know, for a twelve-foot wide. Driveway that we're proposing um. Balancing that, you know, and the scope of that project and pulling that off for a new driveway apron. Um. Given the proximity of the, the stream coming under the roadway, et cetera. Provides some. Difficulties.
Right, it's not for driveway a- uh apron, it's for um bicycle lanes.
No, but I'm saying what we're proposing is two, two driveway aprons. I mean, we don't have an intersection. We don't have a. A D cell lane coming into, you know, the project, so just kind of bracketing it in perspective with. Two new residential lots with a driveway each, you know, in the context of a roadway widening project for a narrow width. That goes over a covert, culverted stream within regulated areas of multiple jurisdictional agencies, you know.
Not asking, we're not asking you to rot, widen the road, though.
Madam, madam chair, can I interrupt and be sworn?
Please, well, uh, have you already been sworn in on this?
I have been sworn in on this. I was gonna, Jerry wanted to swear me in again. Um, I apologize, I've been listening to the entire proceedings, but um I, I had a discussion with the municipal engineer regarding this. The implications of trying to widen this in this area is beyond the scope of any individual property owner. And the municipal engineering, uh, the hearing department uh agrees that a widening by this applicant is not necessary.
Thank you.
Do we want an easement, um, Jim, or just leave it?
Or dedication of right of way, something like that.
No, they, the, the right of way actually exists for the future widening, um, and like. Very, um, we were, were requesting in the original subdivision um that they actually perform the widening. And after looking at the impracticability of it, um, there's that word. Um, it, it, it's just not.
It does, it does work, by the way. Um, okay, and then we have the other. Two, the one about the um delineation of uh conservation easements by post and rail fencing. That seemed like a reasonable objection.
Yes.
Yeah. And then the other. Which was, I'll read what staff, staff recommend, further recommends that a conservation easement coincident with the building setback lines. Be provided on the northerly side of Lot two oh one along Van Dyke Road and on the easterly and northerly sides of two point oh three. Um.
I, I would just say to that end that that front yard area is a significant part of conveyance within that vegetated swell in and around the building. Therefore, it really needs to be disturbed in order to facilitate that front yard area as opposed to. Um, being located in a conservation easement.
Okay.
And, and we agree with that, with uh Mr. Oh, it's finding, so, so that should not be a, a condition.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, I, I think we're finished with um. I guess, Jim, it's actually your memo and Derek's. Um, and then um. There were several possible conditions in Michael La Place's memo from April.
But Jerry, don't, don't we want to hear from the public before we?
Oh, oh, you want to do.
Conditions?
I'm sorry, I, I, I.
Yeah, I, I, I wanted to make sure that the, that our professionals and staff had an opportunity to. To flag anything they wanted to say before public comment, but I don't want to go through all the conditions until after public.
Sure, that makes sense.
Okay, uh, oh, and you, Mr. O'Donnell, you had your hand up for a minute or, or you, okay. Um, so with that, we'll open up the meeting to comments from the public. Um, if you are wanting to um address the board uh for up to three minutes. With comments on this application, please uh virtually raise your hand. Um, I'm looking at the attendees list. I'm not seeing any hands raised. I think folks are here hoping to. Listen to the next application is my guess. Um. So seeing none of, one, one more call, any comments at all on this application before we close the public comment period? Okay, I'll close public comment. So let's go through conditions or should we have a. Motion one way or the other and then, okay, so would someone like to. Move um action on this, Mr. Cohen?
I'd like to move approval of the subdivision and the site plan with the conditions uh that Jerry's gonna enumerate.
Okay, we already talked about the um.
Uh, I need a second, Jerry.
Yeah, sorry.
For you.
You're frozen.
Excuse me? Is there a second?
Okay.
I think Louise is, you know, Louise is frozen or I am.
No, Louise is.
I know.
Louise, yeah.
I, I, can you all hear me?
Yes.
On and off.
Okay. Yeah, my, my connection is unstable. Nobody else in the house is, is on internet, but I've had trouble tonight. I'm sorry. Um, was there a second?
Yes, I did.
Um, good, thank you. Uh, so let's go through conditions, Jerry.
Okay, so we went through the conditions and the report from Jim and, and Derek, that Jim and, and Dan commented on.
I, I'm sorry to interrupt. Mr. Letizia has his hand up. I assume it relates to the next applicant.
Um, yeah.
Uh, if they want to be carried, I, I don't want to keep them here for another half hour while we.
Uh, that, uh, thank you, David, for pointing that out. Mr. Letizia, welcome.
Uh, hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Cohen. That's exactly why I raised my hand. Uh, we've enjoyed the discussion to this point. Uh, but I think we're not going to be able to uh get through our uh presentation. I think it's best that we, you carry our applications so that we can present in full and also give. Yourselves and the public time to ask questions and give your comments. Uh, so I ask if you can adjourn this. I don't know what date you have available. I, I'm assuming it would have to be in October, but. Maybe uh Kerry can let us know.
Thank you, um. For that, uh, Kerry?
Yes.
Um. I'm looking at upcoming meetings, um. Our next meeting is on the twenty-second. I think that we have a full agenda. On that date, I don't know about October sixth.
Uh, October sixth, we have two applications, one site plan, which is fairly large and major and a concept. Uh, we are open on the twentieth. Uh, at this.
October twentieth?
We'll take it. We'll, we'll take October twentieth and hopefully we can be first, or at least I respectfully ask if we can be first.
Certainly.
Yes.
Yeah, but, 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 but before we carry it, um.
Take jurisdiction.
Right, proof of publication and service are in order. The board has jurisdiction. It obviously is not, not going to hear anything substantive tonight. It's going to be carried to October twentieth. There will not be any further notice sent to the public or published in a newspaper.
Thank you.
Um, thanks, Mr. Letizia, and I also want to thank the folks who um. Were attending all, all this time, hoping to hear this application. I apologize. I, I hope that the conversation was in. Entertaining or informative. Um, the stormwater rule situation is very frustrating for us. Uh, and uh it plays out in applications like this, so um.
Understood.
Once again, thank you. We'll see you on the twentieth.
Now, you might be done by ten, so there you go.
Yeah.
Small blessings, right?
Yeah.
Okay, be well. I'll, I'll see you next.
Thank you.
Day, counselor.
Okay, um, just going through um my notes first and then I'll go to the other reports. First, um, the applicant was agreeable to all the um comments in Joe Scoopian's uh early report. Um, and then a vegetated stabilized area twenty feet wide. That was in section six, I guess, so we've already covered that in, in um the report by Jim and Derek. Um, okay, conservation easement area, that's been superseded by discussions. We'll get to that in a minute. But I have a note that they've agreed to all conditions in all the reports. Why don't we go with that? Um, and then when I do a draft, if Mr. Kennedy has any problems with any of that, well, I'm sure. Get back to, to me, we'll work that out.
Absolutely.
Um.
Well, I have a chance to review a draft as well.
Um.
You know, some planning boards let me and some don't.
U- usually we don't, um, but you'll get a copy of the um resolution before it's uh. Uh, reviewed by the board. Unless, unless, madam chair, unless you think otherwise.
No, I, I, I don't want to depart from past practice, but I would like to. Wordsmith easement language in a way that protects the wooded area around the drainage on Lot One.
Perhaps I could help on this.
Yeah.
Um, that's, that's what I'd sort of like to nail down with the. Some polite conversation and artful wording.
Okay, that's fine, and we'll get to that. Um. Then save as many mature trees as possible, but I, I think that goes, I don't know that we want it, do we want to somewhere a condition on that or just? We'll go to the conservation, have that covered by the conservation area. David Shaky said yes.
Yeah, covered by the conservation area, yeah.
In terms of the landscaping, remove the pin oak and the red maple, both of which are, Dan, are they invasive?
No, they're just subject to bacterial leaf sporch.
Okay.
Um, so there was not so much, well, subdue them with some other resilient or um. You know, some, some other native species less prone to, Dan, rescue me here. What do you recommend instead of uh, instead of pin oaks and red maples?
Yeah, it's not too invasive. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, but you were right on the money.
So, so uh white oak or?
I think was, that, that, when we, like you said, did you have?
This will go to the landscape subcommittee, is that, is?
I, I think we should do that.
Sure. Question, Jerry, will. The landscape committee issue a report that uh can be shared with the neighbors?
No, the landscape committee does not issue reports. They just review the plans. And but the meetings are open to the public, aren't they? Yeah, it's a five, five-member. Uh, subcommittee of the board, so they're publicly noticed and you're, you're welcome to attend if you'd like.
Thank you.
Then we'll have kind of one uh condition uh where um. The township professionals will work with the applicant's professionals, and I take it Mr. Thonay as well. In terms of delineating um a conserva- a conservation area and what exceptions should be permitted. In the conservation easement um relating to such things as access to the swell. Um, access to the detention basin, um, you know, things that we had talked about previously. Um, everybody okay with that?
Yes.
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 Okay. And Dan Doblenowski, is there anything in your report? Um, now, thi- this was uh obviously prepared some time ago before the last. Um, iteration of the plan, but at least the, the only copy I have was prepared before the last iteration of the plan was submitted. Um, is there a subsequent uh report? Cause it wasn't, it wasn't on the website.
There is not, no, it, it, I mean, basically, we're waiting for revised plans based upon the modified plan. And um I think, like you said, sending it to the landscape subcommittee for any landscape issues. Um, would probably be the easiest way to manage that and then also uh you would, they would probably address. The tree ordinance, you know, can, I've took calculations at that point.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay, um, the Princeton um shade tree commission. I think they want it more, let's see.
I think it's going to be, again, it's going to be modified based upon the modifications to the plan.
Okay, so we'll just leave those. We won't, any recommendations from them.
Great.
Uh, with, well, apologies, uh, but maybe an unpopular suggestion here, but the, uh, the. Landscape committee, I, I don't know that we actually have a landscape plan. These would all be subject to individual. Um, developments once they are uh, uh, sold and, and individually. Uh, purchased, um. Uh, this, the applicant is not seeking to develop them um as homes individually. So there, there won't be a whole lot of the, for the um committee to review.
You know, I think that, see, Brian, the kinds of things that the landscape committee would be expecting to look at on this one would be. The delineation of the, you know, the final delineation of the conservation areas, the. Uh, tree ordinance counts, as Dan was just referring to. We're not going to be. Uh, tree ordinance counts as Dan was just referring to. We're not going to be looking for. Landscape.
All right, just just so we're clear that there's, okay, uh, just raising your expertise for, understood.
Right, the tree ordinance stuff would be for the common improvements related to stormwater, if that's part of it, and then the individual lots would be handled individually as a tree permit.
Right. Here with me. Okay. Um. Then I think. There's things from the environmental commission. Mounding and now mounding analysis. Stream flow calculations, um green infrastructure, but I don't know that we have to have, we've talked about that quite a bit. Um, Joe's obviously uh. Um, going to be reviewing final plans and um. I don't think we need to put anything in. Would everybody agree?
I think so, but I'm curious, Mr. Scoopian, is a groundwater mounding analysis required at all under? The state rules? I I I know, I I I know there's been a lot of talk about it and I, this relates to how uh. You know, well, it it relates to how water mounds around an uh a basin for the rest of the um. Board and um you're you're on mute, Joe. But is that something that in in this um i- in this application would?
Yeah, there's a.
Give the give the neighbors some uh.
Yeah.
Sense of certainty.
There's a mounding analysis that's required by the stormwater control ordinance. There is, there was a mounding analysis submitted. With the original design that I reviewed, not obviously not this latest one, so there'll be a revised mounding analysis. The comments I had in my last report was, again. Fine tuning some of those numbers to make sure that this number agrees with that number, agrees with that number. Jim has already given me some, uh, you know, a preliminary run of that and it and I've done it myself, so the mounding analysis is fine. Uh, you know, and I expect it will be under the next submittal, the final submittal, but yes, it's part of the, it's part of the requirements.
All right, thank you.
Okay, um. In terms of the summary, Mr. Thonay's summary, that three pages that we spent quite a bit of time on. Um, the first one was about a note, a conservation easement note. He wanted some changes made. Uh, there. Um. Quite extend, quite extensive. Um, Ryan, did you have any problems with that?
No, I think we're good there.
Well, actually. There were issues because they wanted the inclusion of all the.
Well, I'm sorry.
And stuff like that. I I think it was too broad. I think that's the kind of stuff that the lawyer is going to work together on. As they negotiate the easement language.
Okay.
Apologies, yes, I thought that was subsumed with the uh. With the easement discussion.
Okay. Then his second point. Um, the one about. Um. Property owners being encouraged to implement low maintenance landscaping, at least I think the board had reached a. Uh, a consensus that individual property owners, this is from Mr. Thonay's language. Shall develop and implement onsite low maintenance landscaping. Um, ensuring planting native vegetation and minimize the use of fertilizers and pesticides. That's one condition. Also being the deed, a second one, basically, just just. Acknowledging the the stormwater management ordinance in effect and taking out that language, which uh we had talked about at some length about stormwater.
Again, Jerry, I I don't think we wanted to go as. Prescriptive as what Mr. Thonay was suggesting for the landscape. Um, he wanted it to be shall, but we don't review the landscape plans for individual. So there's no, there's no mechanism to enforce that.
Oh, okay.
So that essentially became a a note alerting to to the stormwater requirements and a uh. The existing language, but it it being carried over to the uh, uh, to the plans that were given over to the to the buyers.
Okay. Then, um. The the provision. About the thirteen percent, it can go up to. Um. You can go beyond thirteen percent to nineteen point five percent for one of the lots, seven percent for a second, but I think the way we wound up. Deciding on that was we already had sufficient policies and I guess regulations in the stormwater control ordinance, and we didn't need any of that.
Well, but but I think David made the point and I agree that the deed should reflect those limitations.
Oh, okay.
Uh. Yeah.
Because they don't, they're not contained in our ordinance. They're reflective of this specific site design.
Yep.
Okay. And that would be. For all four lots.
No, just the two.
Just the two new ones.
Correct.
Okay. Hold on. Then, um. Then disconnecting the roof, ladies, I think we wound up um deciding not to pursue that, fair to say?
Yes.
Okay. And there certainly was a lot of staff support for the drywells. Okay, so we're not going to go with that one.
Keeping us on our toes, are you, Jerry?
Um, and then. And that's that's pretty much it.
I mean, just to, just to reiterate, i- if there's an opportunity to encourage. And if it's, and if it looks like the the right thing to do based on the conditions on the ground, to encourage the existing homeowners to disconnect. Their gutters and let them flow over the uh lawn. Uh, that is a very good thing to do. And I I, so I I'm I'm very comfortable with language about encouraging that and and whatnot, but. I don't want to go down the road of requiring. Uh.
Well, I I think we were gonna.
Kind of thing uh on an application like this.
I think the way we had left it was we were going to ask the applicant's engineer to meet onsite with. The municipal engineer and review the feasibility.
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay, hold on, let me just. And the land use engineer we're talking, we're talking about, right?
Yes.
And that's for the existing, David, that's for the existing homes?
Yes.
And what about? What about the the?
The new ones that is, I think, recommended or required under our ordinance.
Okay, so I don't have to address that.
Right.
Okay, that's, and you do you want to say feasibility or, and I'm not joking, well, practicability is actually a little broader, um.
Feasible. Feasible and and um uh. Beneficial. Because it's, uh, you know, it's never not feasible. If it's if it's beneficial, it's a very simple thing. It's just like. Taking off the end of your gutter or putting a different fixture on it. Uh, I I'm sorry, I don't mean to, you, if you have a word that you think works best and that leaves flexibility, but is.
May I suggest practical?
Practical.
Not practicable, but practical. Because the last thing we want to do is have somebody that disconnects their downspouts and ends ends up with a wet muddy backyard. So we we need to find.
Problems, yeah.
We need a solution that actually provides for stormwater quality and and quantity reduction, so we we will work it out.
Thanks.
That's all I have, so it's um. Preliminary and final. Nature. Um, subdivision approval. Uh, with the conditions.
Enumerated just now.
Yep.
And and site plan as well.
And site plan, right.
So before we vote, I just want to say, um, I want to thank. Uh, the the applicant, of course, for for. Its flexibility and its willingness to change its plan more than once. And the objectors too for raising really important issues and just reiterate that for this board. You know, we hear from DEP. That um they're going to take all of these steps to strengthen stormwater rules and put into place. NJ Pact, you know, protecting against against climate threats, raising the bar on stormwater management. And then do it. And they say you can go above and beyond with your stormwater ordinance, but you can't. Apply it to residential projects under the residential site improvement standard, so. My point is that. Um, it it's, you know, the goalposts are always moving, towns are pushed to do their very best and yet. Prevented from doing all we should be doing, and it's really frustrating. And um hopefully, and so I I thank. Our council members who are here for resolutions and being advocates at the state level to make these changes happen. So that we have better tools. Um, and the public has better protections um when it comes to stormwater management, so. With that, I think if if anybody else has comments, happy to hear them, but I think we're ready to take a vote as well, since we've have a motion and a second.
Thank you, Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, we will um see you next time, two weeks.
Don't you need to move to adjourn?
Yes, Mr. Cohen.
Sorry. Yes, please.
Your duty, councilman.
I moved to adjourn.
I second that with enthusiasm.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 Oh, good night.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.